Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. We will begin with our introduction of members.
Jenna Caslucio, Student Council President.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Danielle Catalano, Student Council Vice President.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent. The first item on our agenda this evening is the election of officers. So we will open the floor for nominations for the Office of Chairperson of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Jane Reggio.
Second.
Second. I believe we need to have a voice vote. Let's start. Sarah?
Yes.
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 Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Reggio?
Thank you very much.
Go back to your seat.
Come on back over.
Take your hand. I'll take my hand. In case people don't know who I am.
You make a way better chair than I do.
Yeah. It's all good.
At this point, I will entertain a motion, not a motion, entertain anyone, motion someone for the vice chair position.
I nominate Erin Vinaco.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? I guess I should put that out there first. All right, hearing none in favor of Erin?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Take your seat. Okay. I will entertain nominations for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Tara Larkin.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right, a motion was made by Erin and seconded by Tammy to appoint Tara as our Secretary. All those in favor? Oh, we can't do it that way.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Were you going to say no? Were you thinking about it for a minute there?
I was laughing at it. I accept.
And are we doing the Assistant Treasurer now?
Yes, we are. Yep.
Okay. So first we'll do, I will entertain nominations for the district treasurer for the 1920 school year.
I nominate Karen Vernon, second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, we'll start on this end this time. Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And I will, let's see, hold on. Entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Ronald Pierre Louis as Assistant District Treasurer of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for 2019-20 school year.
Second.
So moved by Erin, seconded by Karen. All those in favor? Tammy, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Oh, you don't get to vote.
Well, you know, if you'd like.
Okay, so we've done that. We also have to do, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Monique as our Assistant Secretary because we had put that into our policies.
That's right. Aye. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I hope there are no others, so all those in favor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Aren't you lucky over there?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And finally, I will entertain a motion to appoint Long and Di Pietro as district councils of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the 2019-20 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Erin?
Second.
Second.
By me.
Sarah. I'm like, I hear it over there. Seconded by Sarah. All those in favor, we'll start with Sarah.
Yes.
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 Okay. Well, that's reorganized, so we're looking forward to a great 1920 school year, and we'll move on to Danielle and Jenna so they can tell us how many days left in the year for the seniors.
Twenty-five.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle. With the nice weather finally present, the students of BMR have been pushing through for the past couple of months and putting in some very hard work. The sophomores recently just had MCAS a couple of weeks ago, and that went really well. The kids who are also in AP classes have also been working hard in over the last couple of months, and even tomorrow, they will be taking AP mock exams to get them ready for the real AP test, which will be happening just a few weeks after they return from April break. Third quarter has recently ended, and all students, especially seniors, are working their hardest to push through the final stretch of the school year. Also, a lot of spring sports have recently started. Sports that have started are baseball, softball, tennis, and track and field. Boys' baseball recently had their first game, and so did softball. Our tennis team has also been going strong against other schools and have been coming out successful with their wins. Girls' softball had their first game and had a very strong win. Track and field's first meet was last night against Knit Monk, and also they came out with a victory, too.
So the band program has also been working very hard for the past few months. The Winter Guard and Winter Winds just finished off their season on March 30th and April 6th. The Winter Guard got first place in their division at the Nezba Finals Championship, and Winter Winds had their last competition this Saturday, and they also got first place at Nezba Finals. The Jazz Band also finished their season with a gold medal at district's competition and a silver medal at their state's competition. Over this past weekend, the high school and middle school bands went to the annual MICA competition and were very successful with that. The seventh grade concert band won a silver, eighth grade won gold, the high school concert band won bronze, and the high school wind ensemble won a gold medal. Because of their gold medals, the eighth grade will be performing at Mechanics Hall this Sunday, and the wind ensemble will be performing at Symphony Hall on May 4th. We are very proud of their hard work throughout both of the seasons. Something really important that is coming up for the juniors and seniors is prom. It has been a very fun event to get ready for with prom tickets being sold at lunches every day this week and last week. Everyone who is going is extremely excited for this event to be held on April 26th at Crystal Lake in Rhode Island. That is going to be a fun and worthwhile experience for all people going.
Are you going?
I am going, yes.
Are you going?
Yes, I am going.
There you go.
So that's all we have for right now. We hope you all have an amazing spring season and enjoy the nice weather, and thank you and have a great night.
Any questions for our ladies? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And enjoy the prom.
Thank you.
At this point, I would ask if there is anyone who would like to come speak about any issue in public forum. Okay. We have warrants, right?
Yes.
Do we have a folder somewhere?
Yeah.
Jason's hoarding them. Took the gavel and all the folders.
I know, sorry.
He wanted it all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the warrants and minutes of the meeting from March 13th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, Consent Agenda A, to approve the warrants and minutes of the meeting from March 13th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so approved.
We do school choice is.
Oh, it's down here.
Item D. This is the early retirement incentive.
Yeah, I'm looking for that. Okay. So in the past, we have offered an early retirement incentive to Unit A members if they retire effective June 30th, 2019. And we would like to, I will entertain a motion if somebody would like to do that again, where we would pay $7,500 to employees who submit their intention to retire by April 30th, 2019. The $7,500 will be taxed and is not pensionable and will be paid by July 31st, 2019. Members would not be eligible for the sick leave incentive, and members who declared future retirement are eligible, but anything you've been paid, it's taken off of that. And employees must be eligible to retire with the MTRS.
So moved.
Moved by Erin. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's April 30th. What is today?
April 10th.
Is that enough time?
Twenty days.
That's good. That's good.
Big decision in 20 days.
Big decision. Okay.
And so this, if anybody took us up on this offer, it would come out of this budget that's working right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to accept, to approve an early retirement incentive to Unit A members if they retire effective June 30th, 2019, as I read previously. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. So we will offer an early retirement incentive to anyone who would be thinking in that direction. And Dr. DeFalco, it's to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The first item on our agenda for this evening, we have our two senior class advisors that are going to talk a little bit about our senior class trip, which I think we would probably all love to go on.
I'm sure they want to take me on.
Tracy and Sue want to come up and talk a little bit to the committee about the trip to Martha's Vineyard, that would be great. Thanks for being here, both of you.
Thank you.
Do you all have a copy of these?
We do. I do. Do we all?
Yeah.
So we put it to a vote with the class, and Martha's Vineyard did come in the top vote. So Monday, June 3rd, which is the start of our senior week, we will have the trip.
Rain or shine?
Rain for shine. We're going to use Foxy Travel out of Northridge for transportation. Because of the great fundraising efforts by the class, we're able to fund the entire trip, along with giving every student $25 for lunch or shopping or whatever they want.
Hey!
So the breakdown is there if the entire class goes, but obviously, upon approval, we'll send out permission slips, and then we'll get an accurate number for that. We're looking at nine chaperones roughly, including the assistant principal and the nurse. So that kind of gives you the breakdown on that. The itinerary, as far as time goes, we'll probably leave BMR at 7:00 a.m., right before the buses are coming in, arrive at C Street approximately 8:30, depart on the ferry at 9:00 from New Bedford, arrive at the vineyard around 9:45, and then the students have the entire day to explore the island, rent bus, bikes, hit the beach if it's warm enough, have lunch. We'll be departing the vineyard at around 5:00, back in New Bedford at 5:45, and hoping to be back at BMR around 7:00. So that's kind of like the overview of the day. As far as communication goes, we're going to have a meeting with the students. We'll have them sign on to the Remind app so we can kind of have communication if there's any questions or an emergency. The nurse will be there to dispense medications or attend to any medical issues. And then behavior expectation is going to be based on, you know, school expectations and school rules. So that's kind of the plan. I personally have never been, so this is going to be new to me.
And I personally will tell you that that is my birthday, so I would be glad to go with the senior class.
We'll let you know if we don't get enough chaperones.
I'm sure they would love it, and I'm quarried, so we're good.
Are the chaperones staff or parents?
Staff.
Staff.
Yeah, I think there'll be a couple of parents, but mostly staff.
Yep. Anybody have any questions? So will the students, like, signed? I mean, if they can go anywhere on the aisle, not that it's that big, but will they? I don't know what.
Be reminded what time the vote leaves?
Yeah.
I think we'll have reminders for the communication. Like I said, we're going to have an official class meeting with them to go over the do's and don'ts and the timeline and all that.
It's a class day, so all the rules still apply?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. The class of 2013 attended this trip, and there were no.
And no one got left behind. Everyone was great. They were really good. Actually, they were at the ferry stop before it was even time, so.
Great. Any other, any questions?
I will make a motion to approve the senior class trip to Martha's Vineyard on June 3rd.
Is there a second? Karen, seconded. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And remember, happy birthday. That's not what I want you to remember, Trey, but okay.
It's one less sub if you go, Jane.
Right?
Cost-saving measure.
Good point. It's cost-saving in the budget.
That's right.
If the committee would be okay with this, Jane, we're still waiting for the architects to arrive, so if we could move up the science curriculum update, that would be really great because we have some wonderful staff here to give the committee an update on the great work that's been going on within the science curriculum revision process. So if our science team, a very small subsection of our science team, it's a much larger team, but if you want to come on up and give the committee an update, that'd be great. And thank you so much for being here. Musical chairs.
I can open my phone. No, I'm good, thanks. I feel like I have enough of a projecting voice.
It's your teacher voice, Pam.
Yes, my teacher voice.
So we started this process this year. We had asked for representatives from elementary school, middle school, and high school. So we have four elementary staff. We have Mrs. Allard, who has the reading lens as well, Mrs. Cardy, who has the tech lens. We have Mrs. Rousell, who does fifth grade, who teaches fifth grade, and Mrs. Harpen, who teaches second grade. We also have three middle school staff, as well as two high school staff. So we have a cross-representation of all of the grades, and staff were asked to join the committee, and this is the crew that joined, so they've been hard at work.
We pretty much started in October. We were meeting with Katie Clark. She's from Teachers 21. And the initial phase of it, we're doing the UBD sort of format, and what that is, is we kind of have stage one, stage two, and stage three. So in the beginning, Katie kind of put us through all the training for that, so we all had a common base of knowledge for that. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with the backwards design process. Basically, what it does is you begin with the end in mind. We begin with the results. That's our stage one. And then, stage two, we get to the evidence, and then, stage three, that's where we have, we plan the day-by-day lessons. So it's kind of like a backwards design. The way I think of it, it's like if you're going on a car trip, you know where you're going first, and then you design the route. It's not the other way around. You don't just drive and drive and drive, and you end up where you end up. You know where you're going. So that's kind of, you know, backwards design, but in terms of education, it's not always done that way, but this is how we're planning it this way. We started with the standards and.
And the standards, I think, was the big thing, is because Next Generation Science Standards are fairly new, a couple of years old, they weren't being taught with fidelity in some classes were taught, some classes weren't. So we looked at all of the standards, and the teachers actually decided which ones paired best together and made units out of those, so.
Right. So there's also some preschool standards that we were concerned, we wanted to make sure they were addressed, so we looked at how those paired up with some of the kindergarten and first grade standards and made sure that our units included those. So no matter what, or where anybody goes to preschool, once they start in BMR, they are, all those standards will be hit. We made sure that all of our goals and our essential questions centered around those standards, and that everything kind of ties back to them. When we looked at the assessments, you know, project-based and experiments, all tied back to which standard is this going to hit, to make sure that everything is still following that path in those goalposts.
And one thing with the Next Generation Science Standards is that it is much more hands-on than the older science standards, which were much more, this is a plant, this is the cell of a plant. Now it's you're taking a plant apart and finding it yourself. So it's much more hands-on, interactive, and experimental, and we're trying to integrate as well with the literature and technology piece and STEM piece as well, so.
And what we're looking towards is ultimately, we're going to be piloting some programs in May, but there's a difference between a program, which is a resource, and the curriculum. So we're writing the curriculum and then finding resources that mirror and back up the curriculum that we've just written. It's not necessarily, we're just going to buy a curriculum off the shelf, and here it is, and hit it to the staff and go. We start with the standards, and now we have a very good understanding what the standards are, and we're selecting resources to go along with that. A lot of times, people use curriculum and resources interchangeably, and they're not the same thing. They're very different.
Do you want to talk about how you guys selected the units?
The units or the resources?
No, the units for instruction that you guys are piloting.
So the, we, those of us who are on the team kind of have an overview now of where everything is going. We reached out to our colleagues who were not on the team and not represented, so that when we present to them, you know, here's a unit for you to pilot for us and try it and let us know what you think, it's exactly what they're looking for. We use their feedback to really drive where we're focusing our attentions right now, so we can get the best feedback possible.
So they picked like the common choice for each grade level, and that's the unit they're going to pilot. So they developed, that unit is developed. We have another meeting tomorrow with Katie. Katie's coming for just the elementary staff because we're going to start, just make sure we have everything in line and ready to go for May.
Our colleagues were also generous enough to make sure they picked the hardest unit that they were least knowledgeable about, so that, you know, we know that when all of this goes into effect, it's all there and everybody's comfortable with it.
And actually, I have an idea with that. The middle and high schools, they're like, if you're a middle or high school science teacher, you know your curriculum inside and out very, very well, whereas it's more of an issue with the elementary levels, because there is some content knowledge that we have to build with the elementary teachers before they can implement it. So what we're looking at is various resources, and the resources, a lot of them, there are some great ones, but they also have their strengths. Some are, you know, lab-based, some are literature-based, some are both, some have technology connections. We're trying to look at all those and see what's the best fit that's out there, and then we'll adopt one of those after the pilot. And then there's still maybe some holes and things that need to be filled, but now that we know the standards extremely well, because we wrote the curriculum units, we'll figure out what's the best fit. But middle and high school, it's not as much of a factor, because again, they're fully, if you're a high school science teacher, you know your curriculum extremely well. It's more the changes have kind of impacted the elementary a little bit more. So that's why we're meeting just with the elementary staff tomorrow.
And we may also pick pieces of different programs. We may like the readers in one program, and we may like the experiments in other programs. So we may take bits and pieces to fit what fits us best, to find what fits us best. And then we'll survey the staff when the pilot is done, as well as maybe some kid input to see what they think about it, and how they like maybe the experiments or the readers or whatever, just to kind of hear what everybody has to say, and then we'll make our recommendation based upon that.
And I could just add, and I know the first and foremost, the science team has been, they really, you all have been very hard at work from the fall till now and have made significant progress, so big kudos to all of the members on the curriculum development team. You're also blazing the trail for the rest of us, because literacy is up next. And so we were really intentional about how we set this up, so our teachers for science will really help be the trainers for the literacy crew that's going to come up. And I have a sneaking suspicion, Pam, you're going to be on that, too.
I'd like to throw my name into that hat. I know that I do not have the final say.
Reading specialist, yes.
But I would love to be a part of that. Hint, hint.
And, but, and so, you know, creating this process for the first time at this particular level in this particular way is really key, because we're going to then kind of strengthen and replicate with English and literacy next year, and then math the following year, and then social studies, and the cycle continues. But I think one of the things I just want to highlight that everybody has mentioned this evening is, and I think it's, I do think it's unique to how we're doing this. You know, we have seen a lot of situations where a very strong curriculum is written, and the units are developed, and the units are given to the teachers, and then it's up to the teacher to figure out how to implement it. And so teachers will have really great units, but they don't have any resources to go with it. So they then have to find and scrap, you know, scramble for the resources to implement. Or, juxtapose, there's no curriculum written, but we'll buy a program, and then it's teach the program. Well, programs don't teach, teachers teach. So what we have done is really tried to marry the two, create the process to write the curriculum, so to Mr. Chigali's point, the teachers learn the standards, and they really understand the skills and concepts behind that. And then, let's kind of tinker around with some different sample programs and resources and materials, and to what Christina was saying, well, let's kind of pick and choose and, you know, pull the best from each part so that we can implement the units the right way. And I do think that's important to know, because that is, that shouldn't be different, but it is different in terms of how that works.
Well, and it's particularly important in science because of that hands-on piece. So we have the resources and tools available to pilot.
So we will be, that's part of what we're.
If we're going to pull apart a plant, we have a plant, or we will?
Yes, we will.
That's the plant, yes.
So we have it tomorrow, and we also have April 30th with Katie, so at that point, we're going to get, we're going to build our kits for the teachers for the science, so if they need batteries for something, we'll make sure we have all that. If we need a plant, we'll get the plant, so we have all those pieces for us to get piloting in May.
And also, so what's been going on? Like I said, we started this in October. Christine and I just kind of facilitated, but the real stars are the teachers that are writing the curriculum. So we meet about every month or every six weeks, and that's kind of like a check-in. They also have time, hours in between that they're working outside of those meetings where they're writing, and they meet with Katie Clark, and they kind of go over how the standards are being written. She gives little hints and kind of steers things a little bit, but they're doing a lot of work outside as well to write these. So again, I would assume that, you know, ELA next year will be a similar path. There'll be sessions, there'll also be outside hours as well. And there'll be still some more like towards the end of the summer here, as we're in the school year, as we get towards summer, there'll be a lot of work to do there, too. So they're working outside of those meetings as well.
We also have a shared Google Drive, so we have all the templates in, so we have a template that, I'll show her a sec, looks like this, and there's, they're all in the Google Drive, so we can see everybody's stuff from all of elementary, middle school, and high school. It's all in one shared, so everybody can see it, Katie can see it, and it's been shared with, Jason has it now. So every principal has it, so we really, it's out there. So once we get it all good to go, we'll have it out for the staff.
It's, if I may, it's been really nice, too, because looking at these standards, we know that everything, you know, when you have a kid come to you in third grade, you know that the second grader has learned everything. You don't have to worry about teaching a little extra, or, you know, one teacher kind of goes, well, I like, you know, I love teaching this, so I'm going to kind of go rogue, like, with this program and with all the standards being kind of at the forefront, it'll be really nice to know that everything has been taught. It'll be really nice to know that everything has been taught. You have all the knowledge as you progress from one grade to the next.
So how will the pilots be structured? Is there going to be one in every building, or how, how will the grade levels work for?
Our goal is to per-grade.
Two per grade, pre-K to?
Not pre-K, K.
K through five, well, K through five, at least in the elementary level, and then middle school and high school will be structured just a tad different. But, because there's only one or two of them at each grade level, so they'll have, they'll teach that. And then, we are going to look at a few different programs. We have three that we're eyeing right now, and we'll use, have, like, say Mrs. Allard is teaching, she'll teach just one program, use, teach that unit using one program. And then, you know, Mr. Chigali's, he'll teach that using same grade with another program, and we'll see what pieces we like best and not.
So May, is your, is it the full month of May, or when is the coming back together and?
So we have training tomorrow, and we're just going to kind of fine-tune things. Then April 30th, that's when we're going to pull, literally pull all our materials together. And that's when we're going to give it to the teachers, so they can do the whole month of May, and at the end, we'll have a survey, like we said, of the staff, of the kids. And then we'll bring that together. And it may be, this, this program is really strong at second grade, but in third grade, this program is. But it can't be hopscotch like that. It's all going to be somewhat aligned vertically. So I think if we have different resources at different grades, that would be the same thing we have now. We don't want to do that. We want to have it all cohesive.
So is there a plan to work through the summer, if, if, to have it onboard for September? Is that our?
There is. So there's two phases we're looking at of staff development. We're actually part of the Blackstone Valley Curriculum Group. So we're running actually a science PD for our teachers, pre-K to five, and for other pre-K to five teachers in the valley. We're actually going to hold it here at the middle school, and it's a three-day training that will cover each strand, so it will really teach the content. However, we are looking at bringing that training specifically to all of our elementary teachers. So we're kind of looking at those that are really kind of excited about it and want to get an early jump, can take the training in June. And those that want to spend the summer, kind of, you know, looking at the units and looking at the resources as they start to come in, we'll have the training on the back end of summer for everybody. So, yeah. And, and what I also want to mention just to the committee is that our team will be returning, I'm sure, in June to present to the committee what the needs will be for the actual materials and kits and readers and all of the resources to go along with it.
So when, when we're going to pilot this in May though, that will require some sort of hands-on, to Jane's. So when will that ordering be done, if they're only finishing April 31st, or whenever that meeting is? What, what's the, I mean, are we running to the science store, or what are we doing?
Most of the experiments, I, I can speak to the elementary level, because I obviously have taught at the elementary level, but most of them are things you can buy at the dollar store.
Okay.
So like, it may be plastic cups and string.
Sure.
And so it may be something you can buy at the dollar store. We're not expecting, the units that were picked, we're not expecting anything above and beyond Amazon.
No oscilloscope, in other words.
Amazon, yes. And we also do have, I know in Millville, we have a whole bunch of science stuff that we've had, so we're actually going to go through that first, from when we had, used to have science as a special, and we're going to pull through that first, take up what we can get out of there, and then we'll build the kits off of that as well.
It's funny you said that, that I mentioned that when I met with Jason this week. I said, have we gone through all of the storage closets in every building to find all of the rulers, bunsen burners, beakers, because I know when I was doing PTO, BFO, whatever you call it, every time we got, our stuff got moved, it went to another closet that had investigations blocks and all these things. So I know they exist in every building.
And we have like a lot of microscopes in Millville, so we, you know, so that's kind of like where my thought is, is that we start there. And then, and some of those resources, obviously, you have, like, if you need a plant, you can't kick that out of storage.
Right.
So, but, you know, there's going to be some things we need to purchase.
Sure.
And we do, we did actually ask the companies to send samples to us as well, so we have, we will have enough samples to pilot.
And it would be very easy to buy everything from these companies. They're gladly to do that for you.
Right.
Like, one of them, I think I saw, was something about weather water collection, and they put a beautiful ziplock bag, he labeled, and had a cup, and a Sharpie in it, and I think that was like $6.
Right.
They would gladly sell that to you, but we're not going to go that way.
And buy a pack of cups for a dollar.
There may be, there may be some things we buy from them, but I think we can supply our own cups and Sharpies for less than $6.
Starting with what we have.
Exciting stuff.
Yeah, very exciting. I, and I appreciate, I know we all do, the effort that people put in to, to develop this. It's clearly long overdue in our district.
And hopefully with more hands-on, the kids will get it, grasp it more, you know, instead of sitting there and being talked to, so.
And it's, you know, for the first time through the process, it's hard, you know, it's something we haven't done before. And as Steve mentioned, the understanding by design, that backwards design concept, a lot of folks know it, but when you kind of get into it and you start wrestling with it and running out the units, it's, you're kind of mucking around with it. It's really, it takes a few go-arounds. So the science crew, what, truly a trailblazer setting this all up for the rest of us, so.
It was definitely very difficult seeing the standards and going, I know what I can do for that, and you have to like put that on hold and make sure that, you know, you did the assessment first, you know where you're going.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thanks. Thank you. I believe as we were listening to our science team, our architect came in, so if you want to come on up and join us, and the PowerPoint's all queued up.
See that? Thank you very much.
Sure. And I, if you toggle the, I think it's the little arrow key.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, here comes your helper, helper.
This is our Superman here, can show us.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I do have copies with me.
I'll hand those out to you.
If you need them. So I'm Brian LaRoche, I'm from PCA 360. We're the owner's project manager. They're signed by the state for the project. NV5 is the designer. They're the design engineers. Unfortunately, he was a little bit later than I on our way down, and we incorrectly had the meeting listed as seventh tonight, not sixth, so. Apologize for that. But I, it's a, I'm happy to be here before you to present the project. Pretty straightforward. It's at the Millville Elementary School. We have two original boilers that are identified to be replaced, and an SOI was submitted to the MSBA for participation in their accelerated repair project, and, and accepted. So this is the first step of the process in that, going after that grant with the state, is you're going to go through a feasibility schematic design phase, and so that's where we're at right now. We've prepared with the help of NV5, we have this book, is the full engineering study. We've sifted it down to the basic information for presentation tonight, but if anybody's interested in all the background that goes to what we're going to show you tonight, it's here in the book. There's drawings and so forth.
That was a PowerPoint, and we said no. You have five slides.
If we went through all the detail, but certainly a lot of information, and so anyhow, so I'll present for you tonight, you know, a little bit about the project, just to bring you up to speed. So the, as I was saying, you know, we're, this is where we are in the timeline for the project. You know, we, we formed the team, you know, the OPM and the, the engineers on, under contract, we've been under contract since the end of January. And in that time, we've gone through and we've done the, the assessment of the, the building and the equipment that's there. The engineers have gone and looked at many different options, and we've put it together in this schematic design package. We put together a project schedule, sort of looking over the durations. We have to present this project to the state as well. They're a partner in this. And so we're showing you tonight, and then the next step will be, they get a look at it, and then they also get to say whether they agree as well. So there's a, quite an extensive approvals process that's about to begin. And then after that, when both the state and, and the town and the, the school committee have agreed, then we go through a process of going after the funds and requesting of the town the appropriation. This is Greg Walsh from my office.
Hi.
Took me a little longer to get here than it did, Brian. I'm not sure how you did.
Yeah, I have a better GPS, I think. So we're, and then after we get through the, the approvals for the appropriation, the project move into the, the bid procurement, where we go out and publicly bid the project, and then, once we make the contract award, we would move on. So we're, we're ways away from that, but for tonight, like I said, we're here for the feasibility schematic design sort of approval. But what we're doing is we're, if we go to the next slide here, we have a couple of options that we are here to talk to you about. So we asked the engineers to look at a one-for-one replacement. You have oil-fired boilers at the school, and we, there's an underground storage tank that's 10,000 gallons that's there. And the tank that exists is at its, end of its useful life. It really needs to be replaced at this point. Any further use runs the risk of some issues, and so it really has to be done. So that was looked at with this option O that we have here, the oil-fired boilers. And they've prepared a cost for that, and it's at 1.3 million for the, the construction of it. And while oil boilers have a lower first cost, when you look at the cost to run a boiler plant that is oil-based, over a longer period of time, it requires more maintenance, and the fuel costs are actually higher. So over a long period of time, you say, you know, how long will this equipment serve the school? You say about 25 to 30 years, and in that timeframe, you're going to spend more money to operate it. So that would be a drawback to that option. And then, if you look at the middle option, we have propane. We actually have two options for you to consider tonight for that. It has to do with where the tanks would be located, but the boiler plant itself would be a little cheaper for the first cost to, to install. Actually, I see there's two. There's a little asterisk. The reason I say it's actually, it is less, because there's two options. The one option that we're going to recommend tonight actually is the lower cost, and we'll get into that in just a minute. So there is a benefit that it does have a lower first cost and a lower fuel maintenance cost, which you'll see in a moment. But if we were to choose this other option that we had for the tank placement, which I'll tell you in a moment why that's not an option anymore, it would have been a little bit more. And then the other one that we were asked to look into is a wood pellet boiler option. And while that is actually a pretty good option from an environmental standpoint, the challenge with a pellet boiler is that the boilers don't have the ability to modulate much, so they basically run at one, one rate, and that's it. And the school's demands fluctuate during the day and at different periods of time. So you have to install a second set of boilers that are either propane or oil to run alongside them to deal with the, sort of the pluses and minuses. And then when you get into the spring and the fall, when it's not always cold, the pellet boiler is hard to sort of start and stop, so then you end up using the other boilers more often. So what ends up happening is you spend quite a bit of money to put in two boiler plants because of some of the challenges they present. So it ends up being a very high first cost, almost $2 million to do that. And it does have more maintenance. You have to continually empty out the ash from the boiler. You got to replenish the pellets. And the school would require a silo on the outside to house the amount of pellets you would need. Otherwise, you'd be getting deliveries on almost a weekly basis, so.
Brittany would love that.
I think, I think we safely kind of felt that was not a viable option, but we wanted to let you know that we did consider it. So then if we go to the next slide here, these are the propane, which seems to be the preferred option based on our interactions with the assistant superintendent. And so we looked at, at a couple of different options, and the two that seemed to be the best were the ones that got us outside of the wetland protection area. There's a 100-foot buffer zone in, there's an area in the trees, sort of below the school, by the field, that is wetlands. And so if we put any of the tank locations in there, then we'd be in the, the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And it's just another public approval that we would have to go through, and then there's more costs associated with doing that work, because you have to follow order of conditions. So we felt that the two options that we have before you were the preferred options. And so option one, P1, we're calling it, that we have six 1,000-gallon propane tanks that would give the school at the coldest design week, it'd give you 10 days of operation. And the other option, we have the same six tanks, but located sort of to the back and rear of the school. There's a water tower in the back there, and we were looking at that as a possibility. I heard from the chief, the fire chief, Chief Landry today, and we were thinking that he would be concerned about propane tanks near the building at the front, and it's funny, it was the opposite condition. He actually, when he saw the, the plans, he said, I actually have a radio tower planned for the rear location, and he would prefer the look, the tanks to be to the front.
We're going to have to have, we'll have a conversation with the chief.
Sure.
Yeah, because we don't want the propane tanks near the building.
You don't, okay.
Yeah.
So the, the tanks will be refilled in, you know, every 10 days, so they, they will need to be snow clearing and a clear path to them, you know, maintained. So that was one consideration that the team thought the front location would make sense. And then from a safety standpoint, you know, there was protections put around the tank of ballards and so forth. And it does meet all the, the state and NFPA design guidelines for clearances away from structures too, so that, so anyhow, I just want to let you know that. So those are really the two options for propane, so it's, the question is, you know, what would you prefer?
So P1, that's the front of the school? That's where?
It's, if, yeah, I, right, so if you're-
As you go back around on the side.
Yeah, that's right.
As you stand, I think you're going to see it, the front door to the school, the right-hand side, as the road goes, there's a surface road that goes around.
And that's where all the parents line up who drop off now, right?
The preschool kids run and play all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a large water tank to the side of the auditorium.
Drop off and pickup.
It's the stage area of the auditorium. It's on the backside of the, the stage.
And just one clarifying question on this. So option P2, that, that's the safest option in terms of having the tanks the furthest away from the actual school structure itself?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
We, we studied, I think we studied six alternatives on the site in total, and for a variety of reasons, as Brian was saying, between wetlands and outcroppings of ledge, so the difficulty of trenching and getting a propane line from the tanks to the school building. We eliminated four, and these two were the top choices. So as Brian said, the, the P1 is up close to the school, and then P2 is out back, sort of in the very back right-hand corner of the site.
So does P2 include clearing that, because you can't take any part of the road, because the trucks have to get down there.
That's correct.
Include clearing the trees?
Yep, yep, yeah, there's a little bit of work there.
So is that why the, it's 1569 on that page, and 1398?
I apologize. We, we actually got updated estimates last night. It's seven o'clock last night, and in the rush, I updated the figures, and I didn't realize I had also put them on, on the options plan. So the figure that you see on P1, on, on the, the three options there, it's actually, it's gone down, which is good. So we, so the number for the area in the back is three, three, 1.3 million, almost 4, 4 million. So, yeah, we had two estimates that were done, one by the, the architect or engineer. We also had a, they hired a, a cost estimator too. So we got those, the cost estimator's estimate, it had gone down, and we were able to take some cost out of the engineer's estimate to get them down, and the two numbers came pretty close to each other, so we feel pretty confident that this estimate is, is a good one, that the 1.3, 98 for that option.
So the number on the replacement options to consider on slide, on slide three, that's actually the cost. It's not the 1569?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. It happens when you do things too quick.
Yeah, these are above ground, right?
Yes, they're all above ground, that's right. Yep, yep.
And, and so then, what is on this page? Has only one of those little silver things?
Yeah, that's just, that's a picture of what they'll be. It's, they're, they're going to be that size. And that's the actual model that the, the plumbing engineer was recommending for the, for the school.
But there'll be how many of those?
There will be actually three.
Oh, three.
The reason three is, right now you have two boilers, and so one boiler would do, would run the school at its peak. So now you have a second one that's really standby. The engineer has designed it, so when you do propane, it's a high-efficiency system, it's condensing. And so the boilers operate at their maximum efficiency when they're in the 50% range, so the boilers aren't at their peak capacity. That's when you get the best efficiency from them. And so they've planned for three smaller boilers. So really, two of them do your load, and the, the third one is a standby, which is, is good practice. That way, if you lose one at some point, you, you're not ever at risk with the school. You'll be able to, to do full coverage.
And, and did, and did you, or did the study find that clearly we need to replace what we have?
The boilers that you have are at their, the end of what the engineers call their expected useful life, so they are definitely getting to that point. Are they functioning now without an issue? They are. But that's not to say that, that it will continue. And the maintenance costs, I think what you'll hear from the school are, are climbing. They're, they're needing to service them more and more. So they, they are working, yes.
And then there also is the issue of the tank, the oil tank, which they've started to, to have some maintenance issues with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not included in the proposal, right?
So my question about the oil tank is, it, it seems that you're definitely pro propane, but was it that you need to replace that 10,000-gallon tank, oil tank?
Yes, so as part-
And to install the oil?
Yep, so as, as part of option O for the boilers, yes, that was a new tank for the oil storage.
Mm-hmm.
And two new oil-fired boilers, three, I'm sorry, three, two oil-fired boilers.
So you gave us the, you said- So, you gave us the, you said, every 10 days we would get a fill-up of propane?
That is correct.
Do we know currently how often we have to fill our 10,000-gallon?
30 days.
So, 30 days?
Correct.
But let me ask...
10,000 gallons of oil, 10 days for 6,000 gallons of propane?
Correct.
That's correct. At the worst, that's the peak coldest period of time.
When you're burning the most fuel.
Probably, I think they said it was the month of January is when would be the peak, sort of late January.
So, the cost we're looking at on option O includes how many boilers to replace?
So, there, the design right now is for three boilers, all similar sized.
Oil or propane?
Oil or propane, that's right.
So, option O is three oil-fired boilers, a new 10,000-gallon tank where it currently stands?
Correct.
Meaning current codes?
Underground, brand-new, it would meet all the current codes, that's correct.
No need for explosive tanks in the school? And, so you said propane is just more cost-efficient?
When you look at from the fuel today, and it's hard for us to know what the future will be for fuel costs, but in today's dollars, there's a calculation that they have in there, it has to do with the amount of BTUs you get per unit of the fuel. You actually, the cost of oil ends up being higher, even though oftentimes what you hear is the, you know, the amount of BTUs you get per gallon of oil versus a gallon of propane are different, but the fuel costs are different, so when you, when you balance them out for how you get your fuel and the fuel's, propane's priced, it does work out that oil is more expensive. So, you will pay higher fuel cost, and you're going to pay higher maintenance costs on oil than you would if it were propane.
Is there any part of this that includes removing the oil tank if we're not going to use it in the future?
So, if we were to go with the propane option, the tank would be removed?
Yes.
As part of option?
Yeah, as part of all three options of all the, all the options we studied, the tank, the underground tank would be removed.
Included in this quote?
Yes, it is.
That's correct.
Yep.
And I just asked a question, but I'll ask it again for public. You learned from MSBA that they will approve an oil project, because in the past they wouldn't do those?
Yes. I called and spoke to our project manager, who also called her boss, and got confirmation that they would.
Approval of oil or propane?
Oil.
Oil.
So, they don't like to, they had had in their grant application that they wouldn't remove old oil tanks, and they wouldn't propose oil?
Oh, well, see, that removal, see, okay, so now I heard a little bit more. So, oil boilers, they will participate in.
Okay.
Now, the grant only is limited to the work that's contained within the room itself. The MSBA doesn't participate in any, they have exceptions to what they'll do, so they give you your reimbursement rate, but then there's all these qualifiers of what they won't pay for. They won't pay for anything outside of the room.
For any fuel?
Including fuel, yeah.
For any, for oil or propane?
Site work, anything like that.
Can I just clarify this?
So, these six tanks that are going to be outside, they won't pay for?
No. They, the site work, so it, there's a little bit of, it's a little bit of a process. Some of the direct-related equipment, they will, but some of the site work, they will not. We have to go through a review process with them in order to, for them to review it, and they'll tell us, that's coming up after the town vote, then they'll go through and tell us what they will and will not.
Okay, let me ask a couple of clarifying questions if I may. So, the first one is around the oil tank?
Sure.
Which is underground, which is not in the room where the boilers are. Will there be a reimbursement, as far as you know, at this stage in the work, for you all to remove that underground oil tank if we shift to propane?
No.
No.
Irregardless of whether it's oil for oil or propane oil, they don't, they don't, environmental and, you know, outs, work outside the room, they don't participate in.
Okay. So, when, so when, when the committee approves their, or recommends their preference, and it goes forward to the town, this 1,873,818 total projection, not all of that is eligible for the reimbursement?
That's...
So, would the, so when we present to the town, would we have an idea of what percentage is reimbursable and what percentage, what percentage of that is not?
We will have been through a review with the MSBA, so we'll have a very good idea, yes.
So, this, so the second question is around the site work. So, the site work is included in this 1,398,107.
Yes.
But again, we don't know, or do we know that the MSBA will not reimburse for any of that site work?
Yeah, some of it they may. It's, it's, the language that they do, it's work directly related to the boiler work, but generally, their rule is if it's outside of the walls of the boiler room, they don't participate. And that usually means site work. So, they may say, "We'll reimburse you for the pipe in the ground, but we won't reimburse you for the excavation for that pipe." You know, they may, they often will sort of say, "Well, the piping is in the plumber's scope, so that counts, but the excavation works in the site cost, so we won't."
So, you will need as much clarity as possible before you go before?
The town of Melville.
You cannot bring, and I say this very respectfully to both of you, but you cannot bring to them what you're bringing here.
Okay.
We have got to have the clarity around what's, what is going to be reimbursed and what's not. That number really matters.
Right.
I agree.
And until we go through this process, until we submit this to the MSBA and go through the process and see what they'll reimburse and what they won't, and we could give you our opinion of what they'll do.
Yeah, sure, 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 I understand that.
But again, that's, it's a, it's a process where, you know, if you can create a case and an argument as to why costs should be part of the boiler room project, even though it's outside the boiler room process, project, space, the MSBA will listen, they may not agree, but they will listen, and sometimes they agree and sometimes they don't. So, until we have that review process, but by the time we come back to talk to the selectmen, we will have had that review process.
So...
We will have solidified what's eligible and what's ineligible, and then we can tell you what, how that impacts your ultimate cost.
What the bottom line?
Because, as Brian said, you have a reimbursement rate, but that's only on the eligible expenses.
On the eligible items.
So, once we calculate, once we find out what's ineligible, we can tell you what your actual reimbursement rate will be.
So, the town, there is a scheduled annual town meeting, May 13th?
13th?
13th. That sounds right, yep.
Will we be, we have a warrant item on hold for that. We have had that review by then, depending on what we say tonight?
The MSBA board meeting is in June.
Oh.
So, we will not make that date.
Okay.
And you're not able to go to town meeting until after the MSBA board has met and voted on the project.
Okay, so we, so we can...
So, what will happen is when this gets submitted, we will work with our team at the MSBA, this is an example of their detailed 311 budget.
Yep.
And we go through a process of reviewing the documents, reviewing the scope, and breaking down the cost into the little parts and pieces, and that's at the time when they'll tell us what's in, what's out. And at the end of that, they will give us a budget that we will then be able to take to the town. So, that, we will have, there's only one thing that is uncertain, and that's contingencies. So, there's soft costs and hard cost contingencies, that's the only thing that the MSBA reserves their right to tell you whether they'll participate in any of those until the end.
Yeah.
So, there is a little margin of uncertainty that we won't know, and, you know, that those monies will be included in the project at that time.
So, we'll know the rate and the eligibility for the different items by, after your meeting with the MSBA?
Yep.
And just another clarifying question if I may. When I look at the budget, so the 1,398,107, that's for the site work, that's for the boilers, that's for all the piping, that's, that's the actual work, work?
Yep.
And the rest of these are other expenses?
That is correct.
That's what we would call soft costs, design and...
Okay.
Seems silly, they pay for the boiler in a room but not the tanks that run it outside the room. But I'm just saying, that's just me.
Because, yeah, I hear you.
Yeah.
I can actually understand their logic of why. Some towns have natural gas piped into the building, and there's no cost to the school for that. So, they try and be even and fair with everybody, and so they say, "Well, why should we, in some cases, pay more to one town and not to another?" They try very hard at being sort of even to be able to be fair to every town and city, gets the exact same treatment.
Right. And that's, again, that's part of that review process and that discussion.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, talking about the equity of, if you have natural gas in your building, you know, you're not looking for reimbursement for anything outside the boiler room, but when you don't have natural gas in your building, you're hoping that they'll consider reimbursing you for the fact that you need to put propane outside your, your building, otherwise you don't, your gas-fired boilers don't run.
Exactly.
So, with all of that being said, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench at you, but with what you're telling me, that working inside the building is higher, is a higher chance of being reimbursed than outside, and we're looking at most cost-effective, were high, high-efficient wall units considered that would supply heating and air conditioning?
High-efficient, I'm sorry?
Like a mini-split?
Like a VRF or something like that? You mean like a variable refrigerant volume system that does both heating and cooling?
The grant program's only for boilers, central plant, they wouldn't, if it's walled units, they, it would not count.
They don't cover them.
Yeah, so that's why it wasn't even considered.
Yeah.
I have a question on option P2. I know we had looked at a playground in the background, and we said no. So, is that land, is that space even, I don't remember why it was?
No, we weren't told no.
I thought it was denied.
No, we weren't told no.
Okay.
The concept of the playground was told no, not the space.
Okay, I thought, I wasn't sure if it was the space, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be an issue if we...
No, no.
And in the woods was an issue, was when we were talking about using the blacktop was where we had the issue, because then the fire truck can't make its way around.
Taking the space, okay.
Which is why I know you can't go any part of the road.
Right, that makes sense.
Road or the parking lot.
It has to be able to be so many feet from the building with its ladder.
Okay.
No, actually, that was the flattest piece for, for everybody. Does anyone have a sense, a feeling, a, so you are looking for us to make a decision on P1, P2 oil?
So, at this point, we need your...
To know what your preferred option is?
Okay.
So that we can let the MSBA board know what your preferred option is, and then they'll look and consider everything, and then also decide whether they agree. Because they, like I said, they're, they're partner in this, they're paying for a good share of it as well. So, oftentimes, though, they'll, they'll go with whatever the recommendation of the local municipality is. So, we're just, that's all we're asking tonight, is just what is your preference for the options? So, we can let them know.
So, let me ask the committee this. Is it, is it, I don't know how to word this, is it worth taking this kind of information to the town and seeing their options, or is it, or their preferences, or is it our preference?
I think the typical process, or the usual process is the committee makes the call, the decision goes back to MSBA.
And then it goes to the town.
The OPM comes out to the towns for town meeting, and then they go back to the board meeting in June for final kind of cut, if you will, or kind of next steps.
Well, I can only speak for myself, but I'm not, I am very leery of a propane tank that's as close to the building as P1 is.
I'm just leery of propane in general, so.
Oh.
Am I, am I...
P1, Jane, you're saying, you're saying P1 is an issue?
I'd like to take P1 out as an option.
Yes.
You're saying plecement?
Yes.
I, I was just going to say that...
Propane itself.
If we're able to remove that oil tank and replace it and get another 20 to 25 years from it, then, you said, does anyone have a sense or, my first initial feelings are why would we go away from oil? I wish we had like the cost savings in front of us. I don't know if someone would tell me that it's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year off of our budget to go from, and I'm kind of curious how Melville will feel about 6,000 gallons of propane tanks being installed?
Well, I, yeah.
What if we went through all this, you had the approvals, the, and then our town declined it because of the tanks, because of, and they preferred oil in the end?
I mean, we're not designing anymore until the town votes, so if at that meeting they said, the vote, I mean, I could see that you could always say either-or. The MSBA may say, "Well, if that, if you're going to give the town the option of either-or, then you may have to go just," they have very specific vote language, you probably have to use the higher-cost vote language, and if for some reason, you know, the desire was, I don't, I've never seen it done before, but I'm just saying, maybe there's two questions, one, that's the money, and then the option. And if the option is the less one, that's fine, as long as, as long as the appropriation in the vote language follows the MSBA rules and the dollar amount covers any of the two, I don't see why not, do you? I mean, I've not seen it done, but...
Yeah. I, my...
I mean, we had, I mean, typically you have one...
One, yeah, you go with one.
...project that's been approved by the MSBA and has, and has been approved by the town, and then you vote an appropriation to pay for that project. And if you did it that way, and people didn't like the proposed solution, they wanted, you proposed oil, and they wanted to do propane, and the vote failed, then you'd have to start that process over again with the MSBA. Whether you can have two separate votes for two different projects, I've not seen that, so I'd have to, I'd want to make sure the MSBA was okay.
Yeah, we definitely would have to include them. I'm just going to talk sort of openly for the moment, but, for example, we've had roof projects where we've said PVC roof or EPDM, and as long as we let the MSBA know that we're considering two options, but we want to decide once the pricing comes in, it's called an add alternate or a deduct alternate, so there is somewhat of a precedent, but this is a little, little bit more.
Well, yeah, because I would think this has more, yeah.
It's not, it's not putting a rubber roof on versus putting a PVC roof on. You're doing, in that case, the MSBA is approving a roof project, and they don't care what the memory is.
Well, and my, my sense is, oil likely has more that's not reimbursed, because the propane is removing a tank, the oil is removing a tank and putting a new tank.
But it's also taking down all these trees and putting all this other stuff outside, so that...
And it's purchasing, is there an option to have the tanks in the ground?
To, to...
Propane?
Put the propane in the ground? There is an option, we don't, we didn't present it to you, but it is, you can put propane underground.
Whoa.
In that $10,000-gallon space. I don't, I think it's all ledge, I don't know if you'd get in the ground. As I'm saying, if we use the current hole, we'd take the...
We just recently built a, when we did that playground, that, that...
Yeah, it's awful.
It's awful. It's all rock.
An awful lot of ledge.
It's all rock, yeah.
We didn't even think that was a possibility, but I think you're right, the, the oil tank location.
It'd have to be the same.
I just don't know that that footprint is actually enough, I don't think it is.
No.
And who knows how much ledge they've removed to put the tank on?
So, are there, in your knowledge, are there a lot of school districts that operate propane systems?
From my experience, the trend is to go towards propane. For the districts that we've worked for, the environmental concern of oil has been their concern. There were some news articles in the last, you know, five years where there have been spills.
Right.
And at the time, we were working on one of them, that became like the whole point of the conversation, is we didn't even want to entertain oil because of the possibility of environmental disaster. I mean, you've had this tank in that location for 20 years without an issue, but, you know, there is wetlands just down...
But then we've had a lot of maintenance, I mean, we have annual maintenance on it, tremendous amount of maintenance on it.
They are having some issues with the tank.
Yes, they are.
Concerns about air and the filling of the tanks that they...
Right.
But that might be for me.
If I could say, the ta, the oil, the technology we have now, there are a couple of things that are safeguards to protect you from issues. They have tank monitoring systems to measure the level, so your consumption versus how much is in the tank, it's always checking to make sure that... much is in the tank, it's always checking to make sure there's no imbalance. Right now, the custodian for the school's doing that manually, you know, he's measuring it on a regular interval.
Right.
He's sort of trending it himself with the weather and how much it's using, so he's doing a really good job of, of protecting the school's risk by doing that, because if there's anything that is out of whack, then it would tell him that there's a problem. There's equipment now that does that automatically.
It's probably better, though.
Intuition is sometimes hard to...
Just not hard to think about.
Then, it's also, everything's double-lined, so the tank, we don't know whether the tank now is double-lined or not.
Right.
It should have been at the time it was put in, but we can't locate anything that tells us for sure it was. But whatever goes in new would be double-lined. The piping from the tank to the room is buried, it's not double-lined. It would be in a new condition, so everything would be designed to drain back into the tank, it would be all dou, you know, double-lined, monitored, so there are a lot of protections that would be put in place for oil that would mitigate those concerns.
So, you just said that you feel the majority go with propane for, but would it be fair to say that those towns or cities have town or city gas?
No.
And not storage tanks?
No, they're, that, those were propane projects as opposed to natural gas projects.
Yeah.
So...
So, propane.
The, the town that I'm thinking of, and it, it was more of an emotional decision of the environmental concerns. At a particular time, there was a school near them that they overfilled a tank, the water got into a storm drain, and polluted a local brook. And it became a big issue in the area. I forget the name of the town. It was out by, like, Templeton, Phillipsden area, off of Route 2.
I mean, clearly, towns that have natural gas would go in that direction, but that's not an option.
Right, if we were talking about a school in Blackstone, they just put, they just expanded their, most of their gas lines, so I think it would be a, we wouldn't even be having this discussion.
Agreed.
Whereas nowhere in Millville has that kind of access.
Who delivers this propane?
I'm not sure.
Do we have, do we have any other building that gets propane right now?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So, we did talk to the local supplier.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, that's what we just were asking.
Yeah, the local supplier, that's another reason why the, the 10-day cycle seemed right, they, the local supplier felt that that was more than reasonable. They also, there's two options, you could own the tanks, or you could rent the tanks, and they just put the cost, they prorated into the, the value of your delivery, you know, the fuel cost. So, it's, you know, so that, those are, there's two options that we could get to, if, when and if we get to that point.
So, earlier, you had asked if you sort of knew what the, the differences were over, it's what they call a life, a life-cycle cost analysis, right? So, what they, what they do in a life-cycle cost analysis is they take your, your first cost, the million, three-year, whatever the number is to build it originally, and then they take into consideration your fuel cost over that period of time, your maintenance cost over that period of time, and just to give you a sense, and in the, in the book that we'll leave here with you, the analysis is here for you. If you had your, either of your propane options, the propane at the school, front of the school, or the back of the school, the life-cycle cost is roughly $3.9 million for the two propane options, and the life-cycle value cost for oil is $5,001.
Oh.
Right, so, over the lifetime of the, of the, the useful life of the prod, of the equipment, you're talking about almost $1,001 more cost, and that's largely coming from the fuel costs. The fuel cost for, for, for the propane is roughly $2.5 million, and the, and the fuel cost for oil over that period of time is 3.7, so...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one?
2.5, 3.7.
2.5 is the fuel, is the fuel cost for either of the propane options, and 3.7 is the fuel cost for, for, for oil.
It's, it's over the whole period of time that the boilers would operate.
That's right.
The life of the boiler.
The life of the boiler, that's, yeah.
Correct.
The estimated cost.
Correct.
So, does this, does this total, the 1.8 million, include the cost of, you just said something about renting tanks versus owning, so does that include purchasing these six tanks?
It does.
Yep.
Not rental, they would be ours, so the fuel cost is lower on delivery because we own them.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a payback analysis, it has to be done, and the last project I did, we did it, and it made sense to own the tanks yourself, and I'm assuming that's going to be the same here. But we didn't get to that point with the supplier, to see what their, what their incremental increases, if you rented the tanks from them.
Under the draft project budget, there's an asterisk at the bottom that says, "Oil option used in this projection." Are those the oil costs or the propane costs? I thought that was a propane cost, but it says, "Oil option used in this projection," or maybe I'm not understanding what that asterisk statement means. Maybe it means something else, I don't know.
Yeah, they, so, again, I'm, I apologize for not getting the late information, all the figures changed, and I guess I didn't fix that, because I think, alas, what happened is when I had the, the spreadsheet, I submitted it a week ago to, to Matt.
Matt?
Yep.
At that time, oil was more than the most expensive propane option, so that's why I picked that, and then when they gave me the new numbers last night, it actually moved around, the op, the propane option further away was a little bit more expensive, so that's why I threw that number in.
Is that the oil number or the propane number?
Propane.
Just, okay, so that, that asterisk is not correct?
Yeah.
It should say propane.
Or it should say propane.
Yep.
I was trying to put in what I thought was the highest cost, just to give you sort of a sense of...
The biggest budget.
The biggest, biggest budget projection that I could, so I apologize.
Okay, that's okay, so it's not oil and that's propane, but the number's correct?
Correct.
That is right.
Okay.
So, can I just, I, I'm trying.
You can.
I never thought I would need to know about this. I thought that's why I had a husband. The option O.
Yes.
O, yep.
There's no, except for replacing the buried tank, there's no other outside of the wall work.
And pipelines.
So, most of this, most of what goes into that option O would most likely be reimbursable because it's in the walls of the, the building, or however you described it.
The estimated value of the tank removal and replacement was 40, I started just a moment ago, $45,000.
So, that's the only out...
$47,000.
Forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, forty-seven.
That's also including putting in new tanks.
Remove and replace? That's the removal and replacement?
Removal and replacement, it was about 47, so...
And that most likely is not reimbursable, because it's outside of the wall.
Correct, right, so, so for each of the...
Potentially the piping, but maybe not the tank.
Okay, give or take.
Give or take, yes.
So, again, again, there's, there is an estimate in here for each of those three options that you can take a look at, but in terms of the work outside the boiler room itself, which is the site work, removal of the old tank, either the installation of a new underground oil tank, or the installation of six propane tanks in one of the two locations, would be roughly $47,000 for the, for the oil.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's $52,000 for the propane at the, at the, at the front end of the school, and about $110,000 for the propane in the far back corner. So, in the scheme of the total project cost, you're talking about somewhere between, say, $50,000 and $110,000 of work that was, would be occurring outside the room that would be potentially ineligible.
So, the, the highest expense is in the, is the P2 where we...
Correct.
Yep.
You would still need to take into account the lifetime cost, I mean, you're still talking about 5.1 million versus 3.9 million.
Correct.
So...
And I, and I think that, to Sarah, that point, Sarah, I think that's why you, I, I know the MSBA process is what it is, and we can't change that, but in our particular situation, it would be very valuable and, you know, help a lot of different areas if we can have that conversation with Millville. And I, and I know it's our, at the end of the day, it's our decision, but, I mean, I think we're really trying not to make things like that, like to have that open conversation, and over time, 5.1 million versus 3.9, but right now, there's cost savings to do the oil.
For the town.
Fifty thousand dollars.
For the, for a short, you know, for a shorter term, which may, may be beneficial to them in their current situation, but, you know, I think it's just, I think we're, if, if we have to go one way or another tonight, you know, I just...
We'd want to...
I wish there was somebody from Millville out there.
But we lease that building.
I think before assuming that, though, we're going to want, I mean, they don't want to be penny-wise, pound-foolish.
Right, what is that?
Correct.
We don't want to assume that they're just going to want a short-term.
No, but I think that would be a nice discussion to be able to have before we put it off.
Is there a time constraint for you guys? Like, you need this from us today?
Yeah, we, we have a deadline to make the June board meeting, the MSBA only meets every two months.
Right.
So, it would be important for us to be in the June, but, you know, if you say...
But at what point, what point do you have to tell them that you want to be in the June meeting? You have to tell them by May 1st?
We've let them know that we're targeting that, but if for some reason you tell us, "Slow down, we need more time," we can certainly tell them.
I'm just, I'm thinking if we use the opportunity in the May meeting to at least...
I just, I think that's why we're a committee, it's, this is, this, these are our responsibilities to, and to make the best decision for the town, that's why our towns elected us to be here and represent them.
If you're comfortable with it.
I'm not saying, but I'm saying, we're sitting here saying, "Oh, someone from Millville is here." There, there are, there are four of us from Millville here, and I think that, that it's our job, and, and I, I...
So, I, what I guess we could say is, is this, I mean, we need, whether you guys could do it by, you know, having another meeting, or having, you know, some sort of a teleconference to vote it, we do need a vote of the, of the school committee.
Right.
As constituted on an option that is your preferred options, so, because we have to submit that with our package to the MSBA to say the school committee voted for this, right?
Right.
So, so putting aside how you would have that vote, in terms of the, sort of the time horizon that we're looking at, we have to submit our package, in order to be on the June MSBA board meeting, we have to submit our package by May 8th, right?
Oh, so we can, okay.
And we were anticipating taking, I think, the selectmen meet on May 6th.
Okay.
And so, we're anticipating going to that meeting with a, an option that had been approved by, by the school committee, so that they could then react to that and tell us whether or not we could submit on the 8th.
Okay.
So, so I guess we, what I'm saying is, we have a little bit of time here that you guys could consider this.
Do we have a meeting on the 24th?
We do.
We do have a meeting on the 24th, and we als, there also is a Board of Selectmen FinCom potential joint meeting next week, Tuesday, because of the holiday Monday.
But are we, so, we're voting to give them our preferred choice.
We're voting to give them.
To give it to them, and then they would tell the towns.
Town.
Millville.
Town, I'm sorry.
I'm town.
And we would take it to Millville and ask for the selectmen's approval.
So, I'm, I'm just going to, I'm going to say that I think our safe option is option O, in taking the town into consideration, because it's something that's already there, we're not at, you know, we're, we're worried right now that Millville's going to say, "Why is it so much money, and why, and, and why are we putting six propane tanks on, on our property?" So, taking option O, we're really doing work on the inside of the building and getting a new oil tank, replacing what's already there, that's not disrupting their grounds or a, a tower that apparently needs to go on the property. However, we are taking on the higher cost in the long run into our budget that we present to our towns every year, over 20 or 25 years was your...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so over 25 years, we're going to potentially spend 1.3 million more on fuel.
The one thing I would say is that doesn't account for the energy efficiency which you mentioned earlier.
Correct, which is another, more the maintenance.
That's not actually factored in, what...
So, you think it would be higher?
So, so...
It could be lower, because you, the boilers, it's, it was done in, in, in the current consumption forward, but I, you know, the new boilers will be more efficient, so you could hedge that, I, I don't know what that is, it's, you know, the boilers right now are running at 80% efficiency, oil-fired boilers, the, they only can get up to about 86, 7%. Propane can operate at 95 to 98% efficiency, so it's not, you know, it's hard, there's a lot of analysis that has to be done.
So, in the conversation with the town of Millville, before the Board of Selectmen to put it on the warrant to even do the feasibility study, and at the town meeting to approve the feasibility study, there was a great discussion about the concern with oil and the repaired oil and the, the maintenance that oil is required, so they, they were particularly looking to see what their other options were.
I prefer the propane, but that's just...
Are there, are, have you worked on any projects that have just replaced oil for oil?
We've not done oil for oil, no.
No, it, because it's not common anymore, is it?
I mean, not...
It's not to say that, there's many projects out there that we haven't done.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if you could look at our, our experience and say that it was definitive for all, but in our experience it's been that we have not done oil for oil.
Yeah. Did Matt, it's hard without Matt, did Matt have a feeling?
Yeah, he recommended the propane.
Are we going to take a committee vote now, or are we going to wait till the next meeting and talk to the Board of Selectmen in between?
Suppose, could they defer to the select board? I mean, is that an option that this...
We don't think we want to do that.
No.
So, we have to, we're going to vote now?
We have to.
We have to.
I don't know.
I like P2 also.
You do as well?
I think, I think if we do, if we do the propane, I, I think P2 is the...
Yeah, I would not do propane if it's P1.
Pretty much P1 is off the discussion.
I think we've all agreed.
Agreed. Yes, you agree.
Yeah, those are the tanks next to the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody wants that.
Yeah, so it's the issue of P2 or replace oil with oil, and I just, I don't know of homeowners who are replacing oil with oil, I don't know of, of anybody who's putting in systems that don't work.
I do worry that the town will not like P2, though, because of putting the tanks out on the property.
And the $110,000 cost that would probably be funded at 100% in their capital lines.
For the, yeah, for the work, but I like the efficiency side of propane as well, which would affect our school budget.
And the, the net impact is, is really $50,000 to the town.
Correct.
It's 50, 50 for the oil or the propane up close, and 110 for the propane further away, so you're only talking about $55,000 is the difference in what might...
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Right, right.
At a minimum, you're going to have $50,000 ineligible cost.
Correct.
In the worst case, you'd have 110, so, you know, for the furthest, the tanks the furthest away, so the incremental cost is $55,000.
Matt, for what it's worth, Matt liked option P2.
It's worth, it's worth, yeah.
So, can we make it contingent on our town's approval for...
If they don't approve it.
Well, the town will have to approve it with the appropriation.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I think, vote your conscience today, vote, vote for what you want, and then we'll take it to the select board, and then the select board is going to have to vote whether they want to appropriate the funds for it, you know, and at that point, we'll, we'll sort of find out how they feel about that.
And you, you already have, you're already on their agenda for their May 8th meeting, or you will?
We are. It's, I think it's, I think it's May 6th.
May 6th.
And again, seeing, it's a similar presentation. We're just asking for their preferred option.
Yep.
They're not, there's no vote of money. It's just so that we can go to the MSBA with some, you know, acknowledgement that the town has, we presented it, it's been considered, and this is the preference.
Yep.
And so, I'm just trying to get a timeline. May, May 6th with Millville.
Yeah.
June something with MSBA. Do we have a meeting? So if we vote something, and Millville says the opposite, could we then reconsider? I mean, because we, this, something has to be done. I think we're all in agreement that some project has to be done with respect to boilers at Millville Elementary. And so while we can make our decision, the reality is Millville has to then vote, I mean, the, what they're doing May 6th is sort of getting their opinion as well. But at, at the end of the day, they have to vote to appropriate money.
Correct.
And so if we're not on the same page, then we're gonna hit a roadblock further up, and, and we have a bigger problem, you know, with a shorter timeline to fix, because MSBA is gonna have some final timelines that we have to stay in. So if they meet May 6th, what is our next meeting after that? Could we possibly just, I mean, if we had to, could we get it on the agenda to reconsider if we needed to, in time to give?
Yeah, the deadline for the MSBA submission is May 8th.
Okay.
So if, if there were a meeting, like, a day or two later, I mean, I could certainly ask, as long as we.
Same day you phone in. I, I'm just one, I mean, I just.
Submit everything. They may, they may give us some leeway.
I mean, we hope it all goes smoothly, but.
And our biggest concern is not delaying the project.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
The timeline of this project. It's not that it's not going to happen with one or the other, but with us making the wrong choice tonight, are we, are we?
We have a meeting May 8th.
We have May 8th. I was just gonna say that. We have May 8th.
Do we do May 7th?
But it sounds like.
Someone mentioned that on the 22nd, you might have a joint meeting of the select board and the FinCom folks?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
The 16th.
16th. Is that a?
We aren't on the agenda.
Yeah, their, school committee's not there.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not a joint meeting with us. It's a joint meeting between their finance committee and their Board of Selectmen.
But we're, we don't, we're not on their agenda.
Not now.
It's time to be put on, though, right?
What?
We could ask before that.
There is time.
And also, the head custodian did check in with us, and he prefers the propane option.
He did.
Oh, we did.
Okay, then.
Well, I think that's important, too.
That is important.
He just called. Yeah, he's watching.
Oh, he's watching, per greedy.
I do, I mean, I think that's important. He's, he's the guy who's.
He doesn't want silos?
That's what the texting.
He didn't want silos?
I'm good that I spoke very highly of him.
So I will make a motion that we accept, we are moving forward with the option P2 tank placement and the propane.
Propane.
Okay, it's per greedy.
So, per greedy.
Per greedy. Second.
Okay. Moved by Erin, seconded by Tara. More discussion. Tammy, we're about to say.
I was just gonna try to move it along.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor of moving the project forward, following the guidelines, set for P2 propane boilers with tanks on the outer edge of the world, of the ledge? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Great, thank you very much.
If we need to do special wording, or was that, that good?
They'll just, we'll get a copy of your meeting minutes. They just need to know that we were in front of you, you met, and you have a.
And we approve moving forward.
So that's perfect. There's no specific language.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
I know there is later on.
Yeah, there is later on.
Later on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the discussion of our 2019-20 school year calendar.
No major changes on this at this point.
So the first day of school for students would be August 28th, with that Friday being part of the Labor Day recess weekend, and that Monday, the 2nd. And without snow, which it never does around here, the final day would be June 16th. And it would include a February vacation from the 17th to the 21st, and an April vacation from the 20th to the 24th. Anybody have any questions about this calendar?
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm fine. It's all right.
You saw it, okay.
I can see.
Anyone? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019-20 academic calendar. So moved by Tara.
Second.
Second by Karen. Any further discussion?
That is tentative to negotiations.
It is tentative pending our negotiations.
I'm having a moment seeing my daughter, my first graduating child's graduation date here.
Is that the blue, the bright blue?
Ooh, getting old.
We can ask her how many more days left until graduation.
I'm just doing it to be 100.
Yeah. Well, 180 plus 25.
180.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Next, we need to do our annual vote on school choice. One of the things I would ask the committee to consider is to maintain our school choice opportunities for kids to choice into our school district. But I would like to ask the committee for some time with the policy subcommittee to perhaps develop some framing around that, to be voted on, pardon me, and discussed at a later date, but would absolutely want to keep our school choice options open for, for all kids.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to participate in the school choice process for the 1920 school year. So moved. Second. Moved by Tara, seconded by Karen. Any discussion?
And this just allows people, it allows them to school, come in, to come in.
Yes, to come to us, yeah. Allows them to come here, and what we would ask the policy committee to do is look at, are there parameters around that timing line? And it still, even though you participate, still allows if a class is full not to take.
That's right.
Particular classes. So the policy, the state policy allows that. Any other questions? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the school choice option for the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District for the 2019-20 school year. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions. Okay?
Thank you.
So approved. You want the wording back?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
It gives me great pleasure to introduce to this, to the committee and to the community, a new member for our team that will be starting with us July 1st, as our new HR specialist, our first HR specialist, human resource specialist for the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District, Ms. Natasha Hersam. And Natasha, if you want to join us up at, at the table up front for just a moment. Natasha comes to us very, very highly recommended. Natasha has a BS in business administration and a man, and management in human resources, and also has a very wide variety of experience and, deep experience in HR, from operations to benefits, to onboarding, and, and everything in between. So we could not be more thrilled that you're here. We had a really rigorous process. We had a panel that represented many different stakeholders from across the district. We screened over 80 applications and had two rounds of initial interviews and two rounds of final interviews. And I'm very excited that Natasha has risen to the surface. I think she is going to do incredible work in our personnel department, soon to be personnel department, within BMR SD. So Natasha, if you'd like to say a few words, welcome.
Thank you. I'm, I'm excited to be here. This is a very interesting process, as far as I haven't been involved with education, so it's very interesting. It's nice to meet everyone. I'm excited. I know that there's a number of projects that we can be working on, so I'm excited. I'm excited to be working with Dr. DeFalco and his team. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So much.
And I look forward to long collaborations.
Lots to do.
Lots to do, yep.
A couple of other quick just updates on some of the searches that we've been running. Our elementary principal search for the complex, we did have a couple of finalists that were sent forward. We have decided to continue our search. We will have another round of interviews on Monday, April 22nd. And while we certainly, you know, the screening committee has been very hard at work identifying very strong candidates, I think we need to continue to search to find just that right match for what we need at the complex to support all children and really start to accelerate our, our work with teaching and learning. So we really appreciate everybody's efforts and patience as we continue to move through this, and we're excited for the next round of interviews on April 22nd, which we have already confirmed quite a few candidates will be coming in for that. So we continue our search, and we will find the right match for sure. Our Director of Learner Support Services, just a update on that position as well. We have also gone through a round of interviews, and we did entertain a couple of finalists. I swear it's not me, but we did have one candidate withdraw from the search and felt that we should continue looking. And so we have reposted, and we hope to have a decision in terms of what direction to move in by the end of this week. Quite frankly, we really need to get planning with our work, in particular around special education, programming and placement and support services. So we are very eager to move this process forward as well, and we'll have an update for the committee and community in May, if not before then, around what, what exactly we need to do moving forward. But we do hope that by Friday, we'll have some more concrete next steps ironed out with that. Any questions on any of the searches?
Yes, I do. On elementary principal search, so finalists were moved to a stage where they interacted with you.
Yes.
And so now that we're moving on, where is that pool of who you're interviewing coming from?
So the, the search committee did a really excellent job of creating kind of parameters, if you will, around key qualities or experiences that they were looking for both pools, the first pool and the second pool, of candidates to, to possess. And used essentially kind of a rubric, if you will, to help identify those candidates. In that process, I do think that there were some candidates, God bless you, that may have been overlooked. And so, for various reasons. And so I think we need to continue to keep the bar very high, but I, but I do think there are multiple pathways to a principalship that sometimes aren't necessarily considered. And I'll give you, for instance, so as we know, the complex is an elementary school. And so one of the criteria that the search committee was looking for was somebody that had elementary leadership experience. Well, that qualification by itself automatically ruled out all middle school experience. So we had qualified sitting principals at the middle school level that were not considered.
It was pretty heavily weighted, too.
Right.
So if you had.
But, but how do you bring in an administrator that has no early childhood into that position?
Doesn't mean they don't have, so I started.
So you're saying they didn't work in that setting, or they didn't have?
Yeah. So, so for instance, I'll use myself as an example. I started as an elementary school teacher, and then became a middle school principal. So as a middle school principal, I, I may not have and didn't make the cut for the elementary principal interviews here, because I was a sitting middle school principal.
Even though you did have elementary experience.
So you didn't, you're what you're saying.
Wasn't it weighted as heavy?
What you're saying is the, the search committee didn't take your elementary teaching experience into consideration?
Was it weighted as heavy as, is that fair, Sarah, to say?
Yeah, it's kind of like if you had a huge amount of elementary school teaching experience, it counted, it kind of counted twice, because it also counted as just teaching experience? I don't know. But it, it tended to favor significantly anyone who had.
Elementary.
Elementary. And just as a disclosure, I started on the original screening committee, and then Sarah, we switched off. So I, I did see the rubric, so I, I know what it is you speak of. So, so just to confirm, you're not putting this out for a third time. You're going to relook at the, the pools and sort of recalibrate the thinking, the overall thinking, and?
Yes, there are also a couple of candidates that could not make the initial interviews. And they have, they weren't rescheduled. So we did call those individuals as well to bring them in on the 22nd.
And the, and the folks who are on, who were on the last print, the planning committee?
The search committee.
Search committee, not planning committee, search committee, they have been invited to be part of the new process of the interview of the other, these people.
Yes. But I will say, if, if we were nearing the end of April, right?
And some can make it, some can't.
So some can't. We have, we have, we have to hold these interviews on the 22nd.
Sure.
So there were a few individuals that are not able to make it, but we, we need to, we need to move this forward. We posted, the original posting was January 17th.
Wow.
So this is, this needs to move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Just a quick update on a couple of key items that we've been working on. As you are where Johns Hopkins University has been working closely with the district, looking really at three different areas of our work. One, studying our written curriculum, which we heard a little bit about tonight in science, but our written curriculum, our taught curriculum, and our learned curriculum. So that's what's on paper, what's actually being taught by the teachers, and what is actually being learned by kids. And so you would assume and hope that those three things are all in alignment, right? But not always the case. And so, as you know, alignment is something that is really important that we are working on, not just vertically, as Mr. Tringali mentioned earlier, but also horizontally across, you know, all fifth grades, so to speak, or all fourth grades. So that's one piece of the work. The second piece of the work is really looking at our instructional practices. And so they did spend three days in the district, visiting every school, and spent quite a bit of time visiting classrooms and taking a look again at the instructional practices, but also the depth of learning that the kids are, are doing through that, through that class time. And then the third part of the work that they are currently doing is something called knowledge mapping, which is actually pretty, pretty interesting. So essentially, what we are doing is we are looking at all of our literature, so the, the texts that the kids are reading, grades K to 5, which is, as you can imagine, a lot. And so what we have done is essentially working with the principals and teachers, narrowed down that to a sampling of five pieces of like big text that the kids spend a lot of time on, novels, that kind of thing. And what they are doing is they are looking at the level of complexity that is required for our kids to be able to read and understand and apply the learnings from that book, and they're going to map all of that out for us. And what will happen, that's the last phase of their study. And as you remember, if you remember, we had written a grant to the Department of Education to have all of this covered through a grant. So none of this is coming from our budget, about $51,000 in grant funding for this. They will be coming back up to the committee, and they will deliver a full report to the committee on their, on their findings. And then as a leadership team, we will be having a conversation around, well, so what now what? And so how do we use this to really accelerate the work within our district improvement strategy? So I just wanted to give a very brief update on that, because as you know, we've been kind of talking about it quite a bit this year, but we are nearing the end of, of their study with us. So as soon as we have that final report, we will have them before the committee. The other, the other piece to loop back to that we spent a lot of time talking about was the Summit Learning Model. And while there is certainly interest in kind of learning more about that, you know, I would definitely agree with, with many of our stakeholders, school committee, teachers, principals, that we're not quite ready to launch yet. And so what we are gonna do is something called Year Zero. And so Year Zero is just a way of kind of outlining, we need more time to study this, and we need more time to play around with the different projects that are in and that exist within the platform of Summit. So we are working very closely with Donna Stone, who I know has been before the committee before, to look at, how can our teachers? before, to look at, how can our teachers who are, you know, who are not ready to adopt that model yet, which I certainly understand, but how can we still get them access to the materials and the projects so they can kind of tinker with it? They can take a project on waves that they have to teach anyways, pull it out of that Summit module, and let the kids try it. And really get a good feel, a better feel for that. We're also looking to see, how can we study schools that are going to be launching this upcoming school year? So, what does that year one look like for schools? So, we can learn from some of their, you know, some of their implementation struggles. And so, I think it's a smart plan. I think it makes sense to spend more time with it and make sure it's something we really want to do, take on as a community, before we make that final decision.
Are you aware of any schools locally that are going to be year one schools?
They are in Connecticut and southern New Hampshire. So, not super far from us. Definitely schools that we could visit within probably a 90-minute ride.
I'd still like to see MCAS data, maybe in the fall, if we can remember, like the Framingham schools that...
Yes. It's a great point.
The schools that are in Massachusetts, just where they fall.
That is a really great point, Erin. One of the schools in Framingham, and I don't recall which one, but they have adopted it completely, like they are wall-to-wall Summit, that's what they do. So, and they have been doing that for a couple of years now, so I think we probably would get a good snapshot of the data after a few years of implementation.
I'd be interested. I feel like I might forget that I wanted to see it, but if you could remember, I'd appreciate it.
I wrote it down.
Thank you.
So, we are still pursuing this Year Zero option at the high school and middle school levels.
And so, once we know, once Donna Stone gives you the information as to sort of what's available, then you'll put it out to teachers and basically say, here's some resources available, who wants to try it first?
Yeah.
Or who wants to use it to supplement what you're doing, or...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Actually, Donna has been working very closely with the principals.
Okay.
So, they have been looking at, you know, the feedback we got from the teachers was, this is super interesting, we definitely want to learn more. And so, what the principals have done with their conversations with Donna is try to define that, learn more, like what does that actually look like? And so, Donna has laid out with the principals some different options, but part of it is exactly what you mentioned. And I think, you know, when we think about rolling out, or potentially rolling out a model like this, I think points of entry into this is really important. So, while we certainly would give all teachers an opportunity to try different projects that exist within there, we are looking very specifically at like grade six and grade nine, right? So, like what would those points of entry be for our system? And if we were to build a pathway, what would that pathway look like? How big would it be? How many kids would it include, et cetera? But I think if, you know, if we're still feeling a little uncertain and need to learn more, then we do that. That's okay.
But I think, I mean, I am very happy that is your recommendation because I think we have a lot going on. You have brought lots of new initiatives, lots of new thinking, and I think if we can have teachers kind of want to do it versus saying, okay, you're going to do it this year, I think the, if it works well, the enthusiasm that's going to come out of that is going to be so much more valuable than, okay, you forced me to do this, it wasn't that bad, I'm going to talk to my neighbor about it. I think when they want to do it and then they're like, wow, this is really cool, or kids really love this, that is, you know, that publicity is going to be much better if we do decide to go larger, you know?
Yeah, agreed. Agreed. And I think one of the things that's important to note exactly on that point, I've said repeatedly to the administrators, to teachers, to the union leadership, to the committee, this is not something we would ever make somebody do. This is something people have to want to do and take on and try on and, you know, because you're right, things don't work, they won't work well if it happens. We don't want to take that approach. There are some things within our work that we have to do, right? This isn't one of those things, though. But I do want to just, you know, kind of, I know some of you were able to attend the Blackstone Finance Subcommittee meeting the other evening, and one of the things that came up was around school choice and kids that are coming in and kids that are leaving, and how do we keep the kids that are leaving? And I think as we continue to think about our own work, we are going to need to be thinking outside the box of how we diversify our own portfolio of options for students and families. You know, again, not hanging my hat solely on this by any sense, but I think we just have to keep exploring what those other might look like.
Great.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
And that's a good segue into the career pathways work. And so, this work has been under construction for quite a few months now, and what I'm going to ask the committee for this evening is to consider and vote, hopefully, for a small amount, a reasonably small amount of money for us to spend on a training program around home health aides. And I'll explain what I'm, why that is in a moment. That is approximately $6,000. So, it's not a huge ask, but I do want to use this as an opportunity to discuss a much bigger piece of work that we are taking on at the high school and we are taking on, to be very frank, within the Blackstone Valley School Districts, plural, within the group of us. And so, as the committee is aware, I am part of the Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium. And there are about 12 towns that are part of this group that range from Bellingham to Hope Dale, all the way up to Millbury, Sutton, Douglas, Uxbridge, Northbridge, and, you know, and everything in between. I think folks know the Blackstone Valley communities. And one of the challenges that we face in Blackstone Valley is, right, it's a blessing, but it's also a challenge, is our size. And so, all of those communities have school populations that range between, you know, 1,300 kids up to about 2,200 kids and kind of everything in between. And all of our high schools with that are reasonably around the same size, so somewhere between 400 and 600 kids. And so, while that is a, I think, in many ways, a significant strength of ours because we really get to know the kids, their families, their strengths and opportunities for growth, as the committee knows firsthand, it's also a challenge to bring in really creative and different programs because our school is small. And in a 425-student high school, it's very difficult to build four pathways, five pathways of career development into that size of a building. One of the things we have done very well, and I know you've heard me say this before repeatedly, is the college preparedness piece of this work. You know, on any given year, we have between 75% and 85% of our kids going to college that have been accepted into a two- or four-year school. And I know you've heard me share before an anecdote from the president of Worcester State who said, you know, what are you doing in BMR? Because your kids are getting in and out of here in four years. You've had one kid that has not made it through in four years. He actually gave me the name and we found him. So, we're not letting this child get away. But, so, you know, I think we've done, and there's always more work to do in that piece of it, but I think we're doing well there with our AP initiatives and through all of the academic side of that work. The part that we've struggled is with career development. And so, our goal at BMR ultimately is that we will have every child graduate with their diploma and. And so, that and is an acceptance to a two- or four-year school and/or an acceptance into a certification program for career and workforce development and/or with a certification to enter right into the workforce. And so, I just want to take a minute to explain some of the work that we're doing around this, so folks will really get a sense of where we're trying to go. The certification and career development work doesn't just happen. And so, we are doing some very intentional planning now to open up opportunities for our kids that has not existed before at our high school. And so, I'm going to give you a very concrete example. We are looking to start in the fall an Advanced Manufacturing, Advanced Manufacturing 1, that's the actual name of the course. You are probably wondering, how on earth are we going to do that without an advanced manufacturing lab and equipment and 3D printer and all the other things we need, quite frankly, over $100,000 worth of equipment we need? What we have done in the Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium is we have started to pool our resources. We are working very collaboratively to say, what is it that all of our high schools can open up and offer to each other? We've got to start working together and not against each other. And so, a prime example of this is this partnership around the launch of Advanced Manufacturing 1, which will be a fall course we will offer next year. Each high school in the Blackstone Valley Consortium will have two to three seats available to them. There'll be a small cost, won't be a significant expense, and the course will be taught by an advanced manufacturing teacher from Uxbridge High School. I actually visited his classroom, yes, I do learning walks in other people's high schools too, and visited his classroom on Friday with other superintendents, had a chance to meet him, meet his kids, and really see this work in action. That course will be taught at the ed hub at the Chamber of Commerce, the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, who does have all the equipment, the 3D printers and all the other equipment that's needed to run that. It is going to be a blended learning course where some of that work will be done online and through eight Saturday sessions in the fall semester will be the face-to-face time where the kids from across the districts will come together to meet with their teacher from Uxbridge to do the work. So, essentially, how this will work, the Blackstone Valley Consortium will actually pay, we do have a small budget, we will pay the fee to the ed hub of about $3,000, and then each district will divvy up the cost for the teacher, you know, based on the number of seats, to actually pay the teacher costs and all the equipment costs and such that we're going to need for that. This course will then turn into Advanced Manufacturing 2. So, these kids will travel as a cohort into a second semester of Advanced Manufacturing. And the idea is that we will then start Advanced Manufacturing 1 again, right? And start another cohort of kids. This is one small piece of what this will look like. We have also collaborated on the transportation, right? So, you know, you might be wondering, or those that don't might be wondering, well, how are we going to cover the transportation costs for this? Well, again, we are pooling our resources. We have vans that we can use. Hope Dale has buses that they can use. They have their own transportation. And we will cost-share the fuel expense and we will cost-share the driver for that so we can get our kids to and from. We are looking to start this with our freshmen. So, for those eighth graders that are thinking, I don't want to go to BMR High School because they don't have career opportunities or career pathways for me, that is not true. We are building those pathways now so that we will have an opportunity for those kids coming in. Now, to expand upon that, this is just the beginning of that work. We have also come together as a Blackstone Valley Superintendent Group and written letters to our local senators and representatives, all of which have confirmed receipt of these letters. These letters are asking for $100,000 in startup money for this initiative, for this type of portfolio development work. They have been incredibly enthusiastic and excited about this work, so much so that we learned recently that the Chair of the Joint Education Committee from the state will be meeting with this subgroup of Blackstone Valley superintendents that have taken this work on, of which I am part of that group. There is a lot of buzz about this. This is different. This is very cutting-edge, and this shows true collaboration across the districts to try to get something in place that we know our kids desperately need. So, in addition to this, we are also pursuing another opportunity within BMR where we are looking to apply next fall for a grant around the development of a biomedical pathway. And so, as you know, the biomedical field is a booming field in the Worcester area, Worcester County. And so, in addition to the advanced manufacturing, we are also looking at pursuing a grant opportunity for a biomed pathway in the high school through Project Lead the Way. What I think is most exciting about this is this is just the beginning of this work. We have surrounding high schools that already have established pathways through Project Lead the Way in computer science, engineering, and many others. Forensic science, that was the other one, that was really very cool, that I could just see kids getting really jazzed over. And so, we are collaborating in a manner that over time, we will be able to open up these opportunities for all of our kids. So, you can remain a BMR kid and take an advanced manufacturing course. You can remain a BMR kid and take a biomed pathway. And so, this is only going to expand from there. The reason that I opened it with this discussion around the home health aid piece, which you might be wondering, like where are we making that connection here? Is this is great for the kids on our front end that are entering in, but we need something for the kids on our back end who are leaving. We have 25 students that are graduating from BMR with no post-grad plans. That is not okay. We cannot just hand a diploma to our graduates and say, good luck, take care. So, what we are looking to do is twofold. We are taking a group of students to Job Corps, which is a program that is run out of North Grafton, that is, there is a post-high school graduate program that runs a variety of career technical certification programs. And if you have a child that qualifies for free reduced lunch, it is free. There is zero cost to this program. So, we are going to be taking a group of students, approximately, I believe, 15, in the middle of May, to the open house, a group of seniors to the open house at Job Corps to pursue some different certification programs. With the home health aid program, we are looking to purchase that program as something we can run in-house. We can do that here. Once we buy it, we own it. It is a blended learning model that essentially has 59 hours of blended learning, kind of online modules, and 16 hours of face-to-face time with an RN, of which we already have a couple of interested nurses to jump on board with this.
How many hours of the face-to-face?
Fifty, I'm sorry, 16. It's a total 75 hours. So, what we are looking to do is run this, and again, our contribution right now to this Blackstone Valley group, let's open some of the seats up. We're not going to fill the 10 seats with just BMR kids. We probably will fill maybe two or three in this first go-around, but that's okay. We can open it up to Hope Dale, Bellingham, Sutton, Douglas, Uxbridge, and we can fill that class and charge a small fee, you know, to help contribute and give back to our district as well. And with that, I'm already in the process of scheduling meetings with the CEOs of two, one in Milford, one in Hope Dale, agencies that are desperately needing home health aides, so that they will come and meet with our kids and say, we have a job for you when you're finished with this program.
So, will that program give them a certification?
We will give them a certification through this, yes, through this particular program. There is a home health aid cert that will be granted to them through the state at the end of this. And look, I think the bottom line is, nobody assumes you'll be a home health aide forever. I mean, you could be, right? But it's the first step.
Yeah.
It's giving our kids an opportunity at a real career, a leg up. And I really hope our community is listening to this because this is the best investment we can make. These kids leave us in 12th grade and, you know, for lack of a better term, we turn them out back into the community. Well, what better way to put them out back into the community with true workforce and career development skills where they can either stay in the Blackstone Valley area and work at some of our advanced manufacturing job opportunities, of which we have many, open opportunities through that, or go into, you know, for this particular example, the healthcare field. I know that's a lot to take in, and I do have a very kind of formal presentation that I want to go over with the committee in May that has goals and objectives and timelines and all of that, but I did want to launch this this evening so that the community can start discussing.
And are you looking for a motion tonight from the committee to approve the home healthcare?
Yes. Yep. For the $6,000 so that we can spend it on that. We don't have a line for that. We don't, you know, we've never, so...
So, that would come out of...
We have a curriculum supply line, which we could use.
I was just going to say, where would you?
But it's a brand-new budget item, and I thought it would be important to get the committee to weigh in on that.
Do we need to say where it comes from? Or do we just make a motion to approve?
As long as he knows where it is.
Yeah, as long as you know that there's somewhere that we have it.
Because we didn't ever approve line type.
Right. That's right.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's just a new idea, it's a new item, it's something we've never...
I think it's exciting.
What?
I think it's very exciting.
Very exciting. I think...
And much needed.
Very exciting, I think, I particularly like that it's tied to a state certification, so there's something in your hand when you leave and...
So I have one, one question that doesn't really go with the home healthcare, and I know you're going to eventually give us a, like you just said, a full presentation. But how many seats, looking forward to next fall, Advanced Manufacturing One, how many seats would we potentially have for our kids in that?
Well, it's about two or three in the first, in the first go-around.
Would it be first come, first served, or with recommendation?
Yeah, we haven't teased out that process yet. We're so excited and eager to kind of get it, you know, to get it going. I don't, we haven't kind of delved into the weeds of that, but that's a really great thing that will have to be, a great point that will have to be addressed, for sure.
Would they, if it's successful in the first year, would they then perhaps be able to offer?
Two cohorts at a time, or?
Without a doubt. I mean, that, the plan is that we will, over time, to be very frank, what we asked the legislators for was some startup money so that the Blackstone Valley Superintendent Group can actually work with a coordinator that will pull all of these different, because imagine, just the coordination for this, right? Think about what that takes in terms of getting this kind of together and off the ground with, never mind the actual logistics, but with the curriculum, the instruction, the teacher, you know, the whole, right? So there's a lot. So what we are looking to do is start this one course, bring it into Advanced Manufacturing Two, and then start to expand and run as many cohorts of kids as we can and that want to.
Well, what, what you're doing is you're giving the students some huge opportunities, but you're also giving the community a, a trained workforce.
Yep.
We can't, they, the local, and I know that this isn't news to anyone here, but they can't fill their positions. We're not turning out, and I say respectfully, but we're not, the, the career and technical school is not turning out kids that are going into the, they're going into college, which is great, and that's fine, but the problem is, so are our kids.
Right.
So when you have our local businesses that are looking to fill these positions, the, the workforce isn't there.
Yep.
So, we have kids that want to do that work, and it's time that we find a way to figure that out, and that's what we're trying to do with that.
Yep. Will entertain a motion to approve the funding to start the project?
So moved.
Moved by Sarah, is there a second? Second by Erin, any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to fund $6,000 towards a home healthcare aid certification program this academic year. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Great. Next in your packet, you will see the job description for the position of Planning, Teaching, and Learning Coach. I know the, through the reorganization, the, the positions were approved, but in front of you is the actual job description for that, and I do want to also note that I did promise and make a commitment to the Unit A Executive Board that I would send them this job description, and I have. So they, they also have this. I know that that was something that was important for them, so I did want to share that with the committee.
And this will be posted internally, externally?
We're going to post it internally first, and to be frank, I hope we can fill it internally. I, I hope that we have folks that are interested. This is a really, very powerful position as far as impact on kids goes, so we'll, we will post it internally first and then take it from there.
And that will be done soon?
As soon as the committee approves the job description.
No, sorry.
We will post, and we'll, you know, we know everything is contingent on budget right now.
Sure, sure, sure.
Motion to approve the position and job description?
And this is a district-wide position?
It's, we were going to look for, yeah, so the way it's written now, it's, it's like the, the general position, but we will have one at the elementary level and we'll have one at the secondary level.
So, but the position is district, so once you have people in place, if you see some need to shift, you're going to be covered, so you're not pigeonholed into a grade or a building?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great question, yeah.
Second. So moved by Sarah, seconded by Tara. If that rhymes. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And the last big item, or item on my specific report, is just the review and approving the change. I'm going to propose a change to the school committee for the 1819 school year, and in your packet, you will see a calendar for this school year. And as you know, we have had one snow day this year, which is unbelievable, and I'm really glad we don't live in the Midwest, because we'd have way more if that were the case, but we have one, and that one snow day puts us into the Monday of that next week. And so, initially, we were scheduled to be done on June, Friday, June 14th. The one snow day pushed us into Monday, June 17th, which is scheduled as a half-day. And the contract, the teacher's contract, has very specific language that states, and I'm paraphrasing, but the superintendent can use, if he or she chooses to, the Professional Development Day in May, which we have on our calendar for the Friday that is connected to Memorial Day, as a school day if needed. So what I am proposing to the committee is that we make that change and we move that half-day that is scheduled right now for Monday, June 17th, to the Friday before Memorial Day in May, and we have a half-day, which is right now is scheduled for professional development, kids are supposed to be off. What I'm proposing is, we use that, that Friday for a half-day for students, and then a half-day in the afternoon for teachers for professional development, and then that will make the last day of school Friday, June 14th. It will be a full day for children and for, and for staff on that Friday, June 14th.
So you would need to approach the union for a memo of understanding to be a full day?
That is correct, for Unit A and Unit B, which is both the Teachers Association and the Assistant Principals. Unit C does not have language around that and follow suit with the other two, but Unit B, our Assistant Principals Unit, says very specifically in the language that they follow the same schedule as Unit A. So I want to make sure that we have everything in place and that there will be no issues moving forward with either of the bargaining units.
Comments?
So with that being said, would it just be easier to keep it as the last day instead of asking them for, keeping it as a half-day on the 14th?
So...
Whereas when we have a snow day or a delay, we're, we're missing that time instead of getting the MOA.
So the challenge, or, or the, the issue with that, that would make the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, which is the May 24th, a full day for kids. Right now, it's a, it's a day off for kids. And so, looking at it from the parental perspective, my concern with that was if families were planning on, you know, leaving to go wherever for that particular weekend, that they might leave, you know, just after lunch or sometime around noon or that kind of thing. That also would mean that we would forego, we would forego any professional development with teachers, and I do think we need to...
No, I'm suggesting leaving the last day as a half-day.
No, 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 but then you'd, so in order to get the 180 days, you'd have to make the 24th a full day, which would change everything else.
Right, but what I'm saying is, when there's a delay for a snow day, it still counts as a full day. Or an early release, it still counts as that full day. So we're not, we don't make up the hours.
But you make up the day, right. I guess what I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, I am not supportive of a half-day for kids on May 24th and a half-day for kids on June 14th. I just think it's too much time lost on learning, and we would lose, if we made that, if we made that full day, the Friday, May 24th, we would lose the professional development time with the teacher.
Which is not a good thing.
And so you feel you're going to be able to get the MOA without?
If we don't get the MOA, we will go to school on Monday, June 17th. Yep.
Which I think you'd have very grateful parents to be done on the Friday, the 14th.
So, has any...
Even if it is a full day.
Has any conversation happened with anyone other than us right now?
Yes, so I've had conversations with the Teachers Association, with the leadership of the Teachers Association, with the leadership of Unit B, of which there's two. So I spoke with both of them at the same time. I also spoke with the President of Unit C. All three were very much on board and understood the idea of the full day at the end of the, you know, school year, that last day. I've also had a deep conversation with the leadership team, and they are in full support of it.
It falls at the parameters of our contracts for the D's.
It does.
It does, yeah.
And financially, I would have to think there's a savings of not coming back on a Monday.
Well, it's...
For an entire school.
Yeah, it's, you know, jump-starting an operation for two hours, and it could be the last day of school, from what I have learned, is not even quite a half-day. It's like two hours or something, and I don't see how we bring in 2,000 people on a Monday for two hours when we have language that allows us to not do that, and it's kind of, kind of jump-starting the whole operation for, for one.
So would the intent to be a motion to make that change, and we'll get it right, contingent upon receiving or executing?
The MOA.
Well, do we then, actually, speaking of MOA, do we first have to take a vote to give Jason the ability to enter into the authority of MOA?
That's...
We're learning, we're getting better at this.
Absolutely, that's exactly what I'm seeking. I can't go into that MOA without...
The authority to do that.
No, you all bless me to do that.
And then we wait on this actual technicality until that happens.
Will it be soon?
No, we, our mo, our motion, our motion would be to move the last day of school to June 14th as a full day, and May 24th as a half-day.
For students.
For students, and a half-day PD for staff, contingent upon receipt of a memo of understanding from all of the unions involved, and giving Jason the authority to execute that memo of understanding.
Yep, exactly.
Karen's going to make that motion.
I'm going to say so moved, whatever you just said.
So moved to, how she's...
So moved, yes stated. I got that one, I did it. That's how we watch the video, right?
We'll get it, we'll get it. Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
Second. So the motion is to make the last day of school, June 14th, as a full day for students, and add May 24th as the half-day for students, which replaces the May 17th, and a half-day PD, following that, a half-day PD for staff, contingent upon a memo of understanding with Unit A and Unit B, and granting Dr. DeFalco the authority to execute that memo of understanding with those unions. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, no, no.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Just very briefly, the business office report.
Looks better.
It does look much better. Our revenues are, well, actually, we'll start with it as listed here. Our salary's been down. We are right on track. We are at $192,068.03 still in the black at this time of the year. Our cost center reviews, we are in the black, $442,157. The difference between the, the March cost center sheet and the April cost center sheet was we had overencumbered some funds in our health insurance, so we were able to release some of that, those overencumbrances. Mr. Aaron Worth and I will be meeting at length on Friday, and we'll be reviewing each one of these function codes, each one of our lines, and we'll be forecasting out, with Monique and Tina's help, the quarter four expenditures, both in payroll and in accounts payable, so we can get a, a true number of where we will land the plane on June 30th, so to speak. So we hope to have that in front of the committee by May.
I'd like to bring that back in.
The personnel report, which Ms. Person will be delivering starting June 1st, is pretty clear.
Lucky you.
In terms of the resignations, retirements, appointments, et cetera. And I should also mention, since food service is on here, we are interviewing this week, there are two finalists for the food service position, so we are in the process of interviewing those finalists.
And it's still a part-time?
Still a part-time, yeah.
But it was only a freshman. All right.
And then lastly, just the facility, under the facilities, just the update on the complex roof. We did file a, after the last meeting in front of the town, sorry, Board of Selectmen in Blackstone, we did file a claim with Maya regarding some of the damages to the roof that we discovered from the 2000, the February 2017 report, and we have since met with one of their expert roofers and their claim adjusters. We've walked the building, identifying all of the leaks, and we had the claim adjuster and the roofer come in and review all of the documentation from when the roof was installed in 2013, I believe, and they are finalizing all of their reporting to then be able to determine a plan moving forward for how to get, how to best get the roof fixed. So we are like 80% of the way there. We just got an update from them today, they're very close to finishing this.
May I ask a clarifying question? So with the claim, does that also sort of retroactively consider getting reimbursed for the two $10,000 payments that we already paid, thinking that the warranty wasn't in place? Or something like, I don't, I don't know exactly what I'm trying to ask, Jason, but I know we've paid 22 $10,000 payments. When that happened, this committee, various members questioned the why.
Yep.
We were told at that time that the warranty didn't cover it for some reason. It was later discovered, or claimed that it was because of the shoveling. We've since discovered that that is...
We've spent over $20,000 shoveling that roof.
Right.
To the people that installed it.
And then had to pay $20,000 to fix the issues. So I'm just wondering, in the claim, is that the two $10,000 payments included to say, "Oh, by the way, we shouldn't have paid this either"?
What we filed for a claim in, in the, and I apologize if there's a little bit of a, I'm just kind of processing that, because what we filed for a claim was the initial damage report from the company who installed the roof, who we paid to clean the roof, who then said we damaged the roof, of $175,000 in 2017. What does that look like in 2019? I don't know. I also don't know to what degree Maya's attorneys are going to outline what we should be reimbursed for, because we have, as I stated in the committee, I had the warrants, I've got the invoices, we have all of that, they're, they now have it, Maya now has it, has spent over $20,000 on making sure that, that the right care has been taken for that roof in terms of snow removal during Superstorm Helena. I mean, this is how far back we go with this, and how deep in the weeds we are with this of damage that was done. So I don't, I don't know what that ultimate claim will shake out to. I wish I had a better answer, Tammy. I don't know if they're going to say the total cost plus reimbursement. I tend to think they won't be reimbursing. I don't know what that will look like yet.
Okay.
Is that, I know that's not the best, but...
No, I mean, I think as long as it's being considered somewhere that we already did pay $20,000, that we, if we sort of win the claim... did pay $20,000, that we, if we sort of win the claim type thing, then we probably shouldn't have paid that other 20 either, oh, by the way. I don't know if there's any repercussion on it, but-
Well, we've, what we have given them are all of the invoices and the copies of the warrants.
Okay.
So they have evidence of all of that. Also, the Town of Blackstone has all of that. We sent it to Dan Keyes literally the next morning, after that meeting in February.
Okay.
So they all have that.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay.
May I, may I ask a question?
You have a, I saw you have a question on this.
So the warrant, warrants that we're signing, some are, have wacky dates on them, like from January, and some are, I moved the folder, but they don't seem to be this month, and I'm not sure if they were included. We only received one, I think I only received one voucher email for this meeting. So I don't know why we had so many.
But do you remember our last workshop? We had received the voucher.
It's there.
Yeah, but we had received the vouchers in the mail, and we wondered why we didn't have them to sign.
Yep, so that's that one. But then they have a stack.
So this one is dated March 28th.
Okay.
These are dated for, sorry, I didn't notice before we voted.
Are they student activities?
It doesn't appear to be.
There's a weird label at the top.
Non-check payroll voucher.
Those aren't mine. That's payroll. And they're non-batch checks, I think, of payroll.
Can you explain?
Yes, we started to, after January, with the accountant Ron Pierre Bouie, we started to do a lot less processing of checks, more, some things are paid online through the bank ACH. I was running a check for everything, and it was causing problems with balancing, and so I was asked not to run a check anymore. But what happened was, I didn't, I didn't know how to print the vouchers. So then, we figured out how to do it through Budget Sense, and that's why mine are backed up.
Oh, I see.
So they're non-check batches.
But there's still monies going out, so they have to, don't-
The money is going out, one of them is unit bank, and that's to pay the payroll. One of them is federal taxes, state taxes. I pay those online, I don't care. There's, oh, Penserv, that's where they do the 403Bs. I pay that online.
So will we, I mean, I'm assuming that we would get some kind of record of it, so we review it, and then we sign it, because they're not supposed to go out before we approve. It's correct?
That's why we're-
So I don't know. Like I said, I just happened to, I thought it was just what was in our voucher and then-
I've never done that in payroll. I've never done that. I don't, so it's Tuesday, sometimes Wednesday morning before payroll is finished. So I'm just saying, I don't know, I know Tina McCroy gets it to you by, I think, Monday or, I'm not sure of the date. But payroll is a little different, so I can't have that ready. Like, I wouldn't be able to have that ready to you by a Monday to look at it, so I don't know.
So have we, when we did the old system, Monique, so how did the committee, how did we do it then?
Just this paper. So what I would do is, I would run the payroll, run the vouchers, and then everything would go into the folder.
Right.
But I didn't send anything separately.
And then the payments were made after, or had you already?
Well, tomorrow is payroll.
Yep.
So you would be signing it now, but tomorrow is payroll. And I haven't made any, those I did, because I, we're trying to backtrack, but I wouldn't make any payments until tomorrow for the deduction companies, like-
So, Monique, the ones with the funky labels, those are things that were paid without a check, but because they're back things, would you say that they've already been in our, we've already signed the voucher, and then they were paid, just now they're coming in a different-
Yeah, it's just kind of, I didn't really, I didn't realize it at the time. I was so used to running it a certain way.
Right.
And then, I was sitting down with Tina McCroy one day, and we were going over everything, and I said, well, first of all, for the school committee, and second of all, for the auditors. So if they're looking at something, if they're, the whole thing is, it's not all here. So then we figured out how, we called Budget Sense, and we figured out how to print this. And that's why this is here, this way. It won't look, it won't be like this in the future. Everything will be as I do it, you know, as-
So would it come to us in a, sort of like the same voucher-
Yes.
...document that we get in our email? It would just say non-checks, or whatever, however you're labeling it?
And unfortunately, you'll have more to sign.
Yeah.
Because I have to do them separately, so that when the, right now, when Patty Gauthier balances everything, it has to be separate.
It's by account or something.
Yes, they want everything on its own voucher. And I'm sorry with that, it makes more paper.
Yeah. Well, that was one of, that was the first thing, I was like, wow, there's so many of these. And then when I started to look at the dates, it looked weird, and then all of a sudden there were those weird labels, and it got weirder, and I was like, I don't know what I'm signing right now. So I panicked.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know any other way to do that.
I think it will make sense going forward, it was just the first time, and I was the first person.
And we apologize, it should have been explained before you got any of this.
My question is, when did we actually approve these? Is it tonight? We just did general warrants, and they're in our folder, but their dates are past. When were they actually approved?
Approved or paid?
Approved.
Well, were they approved?
Clearly have the date.
But, so my question was, were they in our, in some past warrant, they were paid, and now they're run as a separate document to keep track?
Oh, I understand what you're asking, I'm sorry.
So we're just making sure that we actually, we approved, we approved them, they've been paid, and now this is sort of like a third step, because you need to figure out your paperwork.
Yes, I want, I want everything to be, to be there, and I said, I didn't have a paper trail on some of the non-check batches. And I wasn't sure, I, at first I wasn't sure how we were going to do it, and now we know how, moving forward, but now it, yeah. And I'm sorry, I didn't contact you earlier to tell you.
Oh, no, that's not your fault, Monique.
No, it's not.
No, I didn't mean it that way, I just, I would have explained it.
Oh, no, but I do, I should have said something.
No.
Because you're looking at this big thing, and-
So what they're signing now, the backdated stuff, had already been signed and approved and paid?
Yes.
This is just so all the paperwork aligns?
Yes.
Understood. Does that make sense?
Yes, to me.
And you won't see anything like this again. Go back.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sorry.
That's okay, don't apologize.
Yes, I did that step.
Okay.
There's like every other page, so be careful. All right, so, so did you have something else, Tammy, or that was it?
No, but I will need some of that back, because I stopped signing.
We're going to have to just-
We haven't gotten more questions.
Yeah, it hasn't, so probably-
Send them back there first.
Once we adjourn, we can-
Okay.
-pull up chairs and just-
I'm good then, I just-
-circle them around, how about that? All right. Sarah, any, any school committee forum item?
I did see that the budget, state budget is through House Ways and Means.
Oh, yeah.
I believe the number for regional transportation reimbursement went up to 80% reimbursement, and circuit breaker up to 75%. So we'll see where it goes from there. That's all I got.
I know our fifth graders just started on CAS this week, and, you know, wishing them good luck, and after vacation, I think everybody else starts, so work hard, do your best.
Some luck, all means good.
Exactly, enjoy your vacation. Hopefully we'll have good weather.
I just want to, as we all know, I'm sort of on social media often, I'm looking at the district pages and looking at, there are a million tweets that are coming out of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. And I just, I wanted to thank Tim and Jessie, because a lot of stuff that's coming out are these like videos, and I'm assuming they're the ones who are doing them, I'm not entirely sure. I know Mr. Godet has some thing to do with them, but they're really nice pieces of positive happenings that we're, you know, we are able to share with our families, and I really appreciate that, because I think when we are questioned, whether here or at either of the towns about accountability, I think those are the things that help us build that, you know, that story of what we're doing to be accountable, what we're doing to activate our kids' desire to learn and participate in our community, and those videos are awesome to be able to do that. So I just wanted to thank, though, Jessie and Tim and Mr. Godet, and whoever else is shooting videos, and I think, like I said, I share the tweets a lot, because people don't use Twitter as much as some other stuff, so I'm always, especially Dr. DeFalco, I will usually share his tweets via Facebook, and then it reaches, you know, more people. So I just want to give that shout out, because I love those kids singing and doing, you know, fun stuff.
Nothing? Nothing? Aaron?
So I just, I want to give an update, a quick update on our insurance, because it has been a pressing question from our FinComs and our selectmen, and just to let you guys know that Matt brought in some, some great options for us, to the Insurance Advisory Committee, and he actually had some of the reps in last week, the IAC met, and, you know, we viewed all of the presentations. And I just, I want to, I definitely want to reiterate how much work he put into it, and for many years, I've sat on the Insurance Advisory Committee, and we're always, you know, in the negative and needed more. And I do think we have some great options in front of us, so I just want to prepare you guys ahead of time that we will be talking about this, hopefully at our next meeting, with whatever options Matt feels best to bring to us. And he has definitely put a lot of time and energy into it. And I do think we have some great opportunities for our district and our employees. And that is all I have.
All right. I would like to once again congratulate the band, particularly the eighth grade and the high school, and they will be playing again in Mechanics Hall and Symphony Hall. So if anybody wants to go to Symphony Hall, you will actually see the BMR Band play, so that's very exciting. Would also like to thank the two-town finance committees and the Millville Board of Selectmen, we did have our meetings with them, and for the first time in my five years, they were fairly positive meetings, and although people had very distinct questions, and they want to hold the schools accountable, I really had the sense that they valued the work that the superintendent and assistant superintendent, and even the, even us as committee members put into that process. And so I didn't feel belittled, I didn't feel put down, I felt listened to, and that was a really nice feeling. I think the dialogue has worked well this year, so I appreciate that. But I appreciate the towns listening, I don't know what their numbers will be when they put their budget forward, but I know that we gave them numbers that they can work with, and that serve our district well, so I'm hoping they will meet them, that both towns will, and will move forward with a lot greater dialogue as we continue Phase Two and other phases. So I appreciate everyone's effort working on the budget this year, and I know our work is not done. If people would like to know where our budget numbers are, there is a video that Tammy, one of the videos that Tammy shared with the Talking Heads and the Fidget Spinner that will explain it very well. And I look forward to continuing those dialogues, so. And I thank you all very much for selecting me as chair, and I hope we work as well this year as we, next year as we have this year, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity. So with that, I'll entertain, we don't have an executive session today. Oh, we do.
Let's add that the attending Mechanics or Symphony Hall is free.
Oh, it's free, 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 free.
Please come.
As they say in the commercial, free, free, free.
I will be available if anyone would like to join the fan van.
Hi, Mike.
Have fun.
And thank you for re-electing me, by the way, I forgot, this was our first, yes, meeting.
Welcome back.
Congratulations.
It is, it is, it is, it is nice to have that, I will say, it's nice to have that. So thank you for running again. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn, to move into executive session, and not return to adjourn the meeting in the executive session. So moved by Aaron?
Second.
Second by Karen. We need a roll call for that one.
Yes.
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 Taking it back. Ooh, where'd my thing? Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.